All right, good evening. The time being seven ten on June eighth, two thousand and twenty. A quorum of the planning board being present. I call this meeting to order. Just to let everyone who's watching at home know. The participation call in number is nine seven eight seven seven one zero eight one nine. We do have a slight delay between our actual live meeting and what you're seeing on TV. So we'll try to give a little bit of time for people to call in if they wish to. On the TV, it's Comcast Channel ninety-nine and Verizon Channel thirty-three. If for any reason you call in and can't get through, the queue for the call in is only going to three people. So if it's busy, please try back. And once people drop off after having their chance to speak, openings will open up for you to call back in. We do have a reasonably full agenda. So I'll ask that if something that you're calling on is near to the end, that you don't try to get on and sit on home at the beginning, so that those folks can call in. And with that, I will go to Agenda Item A, which is approval minutes for May eleventh, two thousand and twenty.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Benny Fratell, are you here? I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of May eleventh, two thousand and twenty, as written.
All right, I have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All of the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. So just one more thing before we move on to the next item. I did want to make my comment that right now we have three members. Fowler is working on, I think, a technical issue so that he can be with us. Mr. Rider will not be in attendance tonight in dealing with his family issue. So our thoughts are with Mr. Rider and his family while he takes care of that. And we will see him back at our next meeting. Moving on to Agenda Item B, committee reports administrative actions. Are there any committee reports the native members wish to make at this time?
Not here, Mr. Chairman. I'm all set.
One other housekeeping before I move on to the next issue. Anyone who isn't the person who's speaking, if you can remember to mute and stay on mute until you're up to speak. It helps with the background noise. That would be appreciated. Thank you. All right, moving on to Agenda Item B two, twenty-two thirty Main Street, Chulakraman's special permit extension request.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dick Cuco here with Kyle Coopie. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we're here to ask for an extension on the special permit for the Chulakraman's project. It seems as though about three years kind of went by very quickly, but the applicant had begun to work on the project, had full architectural design plan, geotechnical testing, cleared and grubbed it and installed all the utilities and were just getting ready to start the project, the contract that was hired. And in the process, the COVID-nineteen pandemic hit. And I think Alex put into your packet, there was a letter from the lender that said until such time as the state of emergency is over, they have suspended all construction loans. So they definitely want to go forward with the project. We're ready to get moving in earnest. And we have no idea what the status will be with the lender. So we're requesting an extension to the permit.
In the commercial lane, that's still on hold as of now?
Yes.
All right, we'll start with Mr. Fratella.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm glad to hear that the project has started to some degree. We've been waiting for this for a little while. Any idea when they said they will start up a process again of financing or is that still up in the air?
Kyle, can you answer that?
Hi, can you hear me? Everybody hear me okay? Okay, yes, I just went to the bank last week. They're basically inundated with people doing, you know, loan refinancing and not paying mortgages and commercial notes and this and that. So they're basically on a wait and hole thing here. So, you know, I really can't say when we're going to get started. The problem is we have a lot of money invested in appraisals and this and that for that bank. And for us to start all over again would be quite a burden financially for us. So we just, you know, they kind of pulled the plug on it. So we're just waiting to see day by day when they call us up to start the project. But even say they gave us the financing tomorrow. The building right now and getting inspections and things like that, it's really horrendous. Just in the housing market, I can only see how it would be in the commercial market and the building of that size. I just I think it would be a lot of delays because you can't have anybody in the building. Just the cost alone of providing sanitary, you know, cleaning for everything and I just can't fathom the, you know, the overcost of this project if we started it like today or tomorrow. So I guess we, you know, we're on a just wait and hold and see how this whole thing turns out. That's really all I can say, you know? Plus, I don't even know how the rental market will be right now. That's the other side of the coin. That's all I have to say. So we're just looking for an extension to the permit. Again, we brought all the utilities in, you know, we trimmed the trees, brought the gas in, everything's ready to go. That's all I can say at this time.
That's good for me. I was just trying to find out if there was a possible date, but obviously there's not. So with that, I have no problem extending the permit as requested for two-two-three-zero Main Street. So all set, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Delaney?
I have no problem with it. It's been discussed. I'm all set to approve it, the extension.
We have Mr. Fowler yet? Still pending?
Still pending, Mr. Chairman.
All right. All right, I don't have an issue with the extension, given the extension, obviously, the circumstances that are out of the ordinary. I know the extension's requesting three years. Is there a reason why the three years and not a year?
We just asked for three years because that's what was given to us originally, so.
The reason I say that is because I'd like to do, well, I see what the other members want to do, but I'd rather do it for the year. Partly because this is the project that basically, once the building permit is pulled, it puts the town over the ten percent for affordable housing. But until that permit's pulled, we can't count them. So I want us to be able to stay on this and be able to get this going as quickly as possible to that point, at least to the permit. Because that's the key piece that allows it to be submitted to the state. So I don't know what the other members, but I would ask that we do it for the year and revisit it rather than just blanketly do it for the three years now. Mr. Fratella?
I have no problem doing that, Mr. Chairman. You know, one year, two years, three years. I mean, you want to do one year, that's fine. But I know this is going to go forward, just the question of getting the financing. So I'm fine either way.
Shouldn't be a problem. Hopefully, we won't be back in a year asking for another one.
Yeah, but at that point, if you're in the process, then it's obviously even that much easier. But, I mean, hopefully, things do get moving. But I'd rather stay on this than have it potentially float out there for three years before we revisit it again. Mr. Delaney, do you have a, you all right with that or do you have a different opinion?
No, I have, I'm okay with that. You know, the builder was looking for three years. You know, if it doesn't happen, we can always bring it back in another year.
All right, I'll make one more request to see.
Could we say a year from when the emergency orders are lifted? Because that might be another sixty days, ninety days, we don't know. Because everything else has stayed, like if, you know, we can't file for appeals, people can't record permits, the thing couldn't even get recorded. I suppose it could electronically, but it just, you know, we're hoping that it's going to be within sixty or forty-five days. But with everything that's going on, if we get another surge, then we'll be behind the eight ball. But just a request.
All right, so I'm fine if we want to make it, you know, start the, but we have to, but we have to issue the, we have to issue the extension now because it's going to run out. We can't wait. So might as well just do it.
You could extend it to one year from when the emergency, state of emergency is lifted. You could approve, so let's say in fourteen months or sixteen months.
Okay, so what you mean is, so you mean a year plus however many days between now and the lifting of the current state of emergency?
Correct.
That's what you mean? Okay. I have no problem with that.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, Mr. Cuco as well. That'll give us time at least to get the emergency off the boards and back in operation and you guys can get going, I guess.
That's fine.
Thank you.
So we still don't have this to follow yet, right?
So I don't see him.
No, he's up and down.
All right. Okay, all right. So what is the pleasure of the board then?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the extension of the permit with a year plus the time involved for the, when the emergency is lifted.
Okay, the current state of emergency. All right, very good. So we have a motion made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Fowler, can you hear us now?
All right. Moving on to Agenda Item B three, fifteen seventy-four Main Street, Circle Health, non substantial change determination.
Could I just say something? Thank you very much, guys. I'm going to sign off.
No problem, Kyle. Thank you. Have a good night.
Bye-bye.
Do we have anyone here for fifteen seventy-four Main Street?
Mr. Foley, you're on mute.
How's that? Good, yeah. So I'm Kevin Foley. I'm the chief engineer and property manager for Lowell General Hospital and I'm representing LGH Medical Building Services, who built the building. And I has a lease on it. And we also have Tracy McPadden here, who is our Director of Urgent Cares. In case any operational or medical type issues come up, Tracy can help us out on that. And we have an application in for approval of a non substantial determination for a mobile COVID testing site that would like to run in the parking lot of the building. We actually have a occupational medicine service that's run through the urgent cares where we provide employers a place to send their employees for initial hiring, physicals, DOT exams, drug screenings. And right now, there's a need for COVID testing. And from our experience over at the hospital, it's the most efficient way to do this testing is by going out to people's cars and literally just testing them whether they're still in their car. So we've put together this application and I hope everybody has a copy. And I guess I'll put it out there, see if you've all taken a look at it and see if you have any questions for Tracy or I.
All right, we'll start with Mr. Delaney.
You know something, I'm all for this because the, my grandchildren had to go to Lowell to get tested. I think it would be a good thing for us to have a place in Tewksbury. From what I understand, CVS does it as well. The thing, I guess, written in here was a letter from the fire chief and Mr. Sawicki from the fire department. Will these inspections or testing, will this be done, you know, by appointment only so that the parking lot won't get jam packed with people? Or are you just going to have everybody come and line up?
No, no, this is.
That would, is that a problem?
Oh, no, no, this is by appointment only. And we're really good at it. We've actually been doing this at the main campus for a couple of months now. And all of the visits are pre-scheduled. And we're going to do the same thing here. I know there's a concern about backing up the cars into the street. We don't want them backing up in the parking lot where it would become a problem for our urgent care and our family practice. You know, we want it to be safe for our own patients to walk in. So we're really looking to manage the time.
And if, you know, if it's by appointment only and you understand what room you have at the parking lot, I have no problem with this at all. As a matter of fact, I'm all for it. It's, it'll save, like if anybody in my family had to be tested again, okay, it would save the trip elsewhere out of town.
Okay, well, I want to make sure it's clear. This is for employers. So employees will be coming over, but why don't I have Tracy come on and just make sure that that's clear?
Yeah, sure. This actually could potentially be for patients of the urgent care, either medical or occupational medicine patients. But all patients will have been seen by a physician and they will have been given an order to get it done. So what that means is there'll be nobody coming to us that's very, very sick. Because if they're very sick, they're going to send them to the emergency department. So these patients will be very well ambulatory and they will come by appointment only. We will have really good control of the number of cars entering the lot for this testing. And you're right, this is our farthest place away from the main campus of the hospital. And I think it would be a great convenience for the community of Tewksbury to have them close by.
Okay, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fratella?
All right, so I'm just trying to get some clarity here. Is this for the general public or just for the business people that you have contracted?
This is for our urgent care physicians, which we have both physicians that care for businesses, but also for sick people. So employees can be sick people that need to be cleared either to return to work or if they, you know, we have had instances where we've had like police officers in municipalities who's who has his partner that he's in the car with and he can't go back to work until he gets the test. So it just would provide access to folks to be able to come get testing. But they would have to have an order through a Circle Health doctor and they would have to have an appointment scheduled.
Okay, so a Tewksbury resident with all those requirements can't come in to get tested like everybody else if they needed to?
You could, because we're in urgent care. So you reach out to the urgent care and make an appointment and we could definitely offer that free. We have physicians on site, you know, twelve hours a day, seven days a week.
Okay, all right. So my next question to you, I guess, Mr. Foley, would be, looking at the map, you're looking for two, for two testing sites or one?
So it's one. So I sent the later map around today. Just showing option two, where it's kind of in the middle aisle, island. And that first one showed traveling in both directions, but we're actually going to just travel out from the building now. So people will drive down, kind of down towards the handicap parking spots and then turn out all in one direction. And we're showing using seven lanes, but our intent is to just start with four. We think four will be enough. And just because of the width of the lanes, we may have to widen them a little bit just to make them safe for our staff to walk between cars.
Okay.
But it gives us some room to expand.
So accessing the Circle Health building, you can come in off of Main Street or Victor Drive to get tested?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And we don't plan on putting any signs out on the street. It's just going to be people coming in and we'll have some sandwich.
Correct?
Yes, yep.
So when you pull into the parking lot off of Victor Drive, what does somebody do? Take a right?
Yes.
Where the arrows are?
Yep, you take a right as soon as you come in and you travel down and around.
Get tested where the blue arrows are on the plan, correct?
Correct, yep.
And then leave, general exit, out the same Victor Drive or the other way, right?
Correct, right turn only on the Main Street.
Right, exactly. Or out Victor Drive and back out to wherever you want to go, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So another question I have is, how many people do you figure you'll be testing on a day?
I can tell you what we're doing at the hospital, but I'm not sure how many we will actually have. I can tell you what we're planning to do is, you know, just a couple of patients every fifteen minutes. And at the hospital where we've been doing it, they've been able to do like a patient every one to three minutes, essentially. So we think that that's definitely giving plenty of time to get a person in, get them swabbed and let them leave without costing any backup.
Okay, I guess my next question is, is the need that drastic still? I mean, I'm not in the field, but I mean, I know they've done away with the Lowell site as far as getting away from the testing site in Lowell. They closed that and some other spots around, but. So is the need still that drastic that you have to put up another testing site outside?
So we do anticipate with all of these businesses that are opening, we know we just entered phase two of opening Massachusetts today, that businesses are required to have a plan on how they're going to manage employees either who are sick or who are exposed. And this gives them an option to have testing and evaluation for their employees. So we want to be prepared for that, be able to support communities.
All right, another question I have is, you're looking for a twelve to eighteen month window for the office? Is that accurate?
Yeah.
Yes, one to two flu seasons is kind of what we're looking at, just to see what happens. You know, we have COVID next year with the regular flu in September, October, November. Who knows what the need will be?
So this will be a tent? Is that what it's going to be up here, a tent?
No, it's a office box. So it's like a container, but it's really built as an office. So it looks a little nicer. And it has heating and air conditioning because our people have to be in PPE while they're doing this testing. And it's a two-person team at least. So, you know, they need a place to be cool or warm, depending on the time of year.
Okay, I mean, I'm all for this. Don't get me wrong. I'm just trying to get clarity so that the general public can understand what's going on here and maybe understand what you're trying to do here. So if someone's to drive in, they pull into one of the, one of the bays, get tested, they go into the, into the office and store the test or what do they do with the test when they get in there? What's the building for, just for housing?
That's exactly what it is. So we'll have pre-registered people. So we'll have pre-printed files with folks' names and medical record number. And then once we swab each individual patient after verifying their name and date of birth and who they really are, that will then be stored in a cooler in that, in that contain, in that room, that office.
I got it, okay.
Yep, and it also gives a place for our staff to go in and get cool off in between if there's downtime.
Sure, sure, sure. Okay, I got some questions answered and I think, I know I seen the letter from the, from the fire chief about not being in favor of this, but I think you have it pretty well set as far as, you know, containing it into that one section and not interfering with the entire flow of traffic on site to the other, to get into the regular building. So I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. I don't, I don't agree. This, this option two setup to be convenient for the people driving in and out to do the COVID testing, to me seems to be the way that's going to put them the most in the way of people who want to actually get to the emergency services for which the building was actually approved originally. Because if someone's coming in, whether it's Victor Drive or Main Street, and they come into what is the driving lane closest to the building, if there's any kind of a backup or they're not sure where to go, they're right in the way of someone else trying to get in and get to the actual hospital for the emergency care in that section of the parking lot. And it's potentially going to be in both directions because you're going to come in from, from Main Street, come in and take a left into that lane. You're going to come in from Victor Drive and take a right. You potentially got people in the way going in both directions, waiting to get into one of these bays when they're told where to go. And if for some reason things get busy, that's literally where they're all going to be in the way. I don't see how that makes sense.
Well, we have the outside lanes in the back park, the back part of the parking lot. And now those are generally empty during the day, you know, just a few employees parked there. And I believe there's fourteen spots. So even if there's four employees up there, you still got at least ten spots. Plus, you've got about sixteen spots on the other half of the parking lot that would, people would tend to drive into first from Main Street.
I'm not, I'm not as concerned about where they park. I'm talking about literally being able to get to the doors to come in when the car's in the way. I don't want someone who's got an emergency situation driving to the back section of the parking lot and then have to come through the parking lot to get to the door because they couldn't get by cars that are in their way in the main, in the main driving lane closest to the building.
Well, there won't be, well, actually, are you thinking there's going to be cars parked in the main lane?
No, I think there might be cars in the way.
No, no, but there's not going to be any cars in the lane. They're going to be in parking spots.
They will be when you tell them where to go.
Yeah, absolutely.
Before they tell, before you tell them where to go, where are they going to be?
Oh, no, we have the signage. The signage is going to point them to where they go. We're going to have signs that say COVID testing.
You don't understand what I'm saying. If someone pulls in and doesn't know which lane they're supposed to go into, they're going to stop until someone tells them, go to that lane.
Right, but we'll have signage.
Or they're going to stop to figure out what the signage is telling them where to go. And they're going to do it right in the driving lane closest to the building. And that's just one car. If it happens that you get several showing up because you've got multiple lanes here, you're potentially going to have multiple people coming in for a ten AM appointment. If they all show up at about nine fifty-five, where are they going to be? They're going to be in that driving lane. They're not going to yet be in any parking spaces. And if someone comes in who has an actual emergency, you potentially have cars coming at that place from both directions in the way of somebody who has an actual emergency, not potentially someone who works for a company who has nothing to do with Tewksbury, who's been brought now to Tewksbury to get a COVID test. So I have an issue with that.
Right.
Because we're not even talking about emergency COVID testing. We're talking about businesses who could be from anywhere, who would rather have people come to Tewksbury and drive through Tewksbury to come to this site as opposed to going to Lowell General. Now, I have no problem with this being an emergency site. I do have concerns with bringing in additional people who might be in the way of people who might actually need emergency services. Most likely are going to be from Tewksbury and the people going into those COVID bays are not.
So part of our plan is flexibility and the fact that we're starting with the four spots instead of all seven lanes. And one of the other issues we have at this point too is because of telemedicine, the amount of patients that we're seeing at the urgent care and the family practice is way down. And the one thing in the long run we don't want to affect is access to those businesses. They were just starting to take off and we really want to see them thrive. And even we wouldn't let the mobile testing interfere with those businesses. So if it really became that busy, we would, we would also be concerned about that.
At this point, I'm not prepared to let them get in the way of the emergency services.
Well, we don't think they will. We have a plan and we've done this elsewhere.
Here's your problem, though. I do, and you can't have this until I don't feel that way. That's sort of the problem right now. So what I'm saying is, I'm not comfortable with what you've presented being working. That's what I'm telling you. So while you, you, you may, and that's fine, but you haven't convinced me. And I have a concern with where those are and the potential of cars being in the way. I'm, again, I appreciate that the services in the building, you want them to do well, that's fine. But I'm thinking of now someone showing up who's choking. They're not coming there for an MRI. That person needs to get into the emergency room and they're going to potentially have cars in their way while waiting to get a COVID test that isn't even an emergency test. This is people who are coming to get cleared to go back to work from who knows where. That's, that's a concern to me. That option two, I don't see why, how that works best with an emergency facility when that could potentially put people in the way, the way you have people coming in, pulling into those spots.
Well, first of all, are you looking at the map with the directions in both ways or one way? Are you looking at option one, option two, or do you have just the plan that went around today with just the direction and one arrow's in the direction?
I have your original, which has option one and option two.
Okay, we have a later map than that.
And. And, and I have one that only seems to show me one option.
Yeah, that's from today and that's the one that we settled on after thinking about this and talking to our team that's been doing this at the other site. So, um,
If I could just jump in really quick. So, um, I am the director of both emergency and urgent care services at Circle Health and Lowell General Hospital. The urgent cares are not an emergency facility. So they, they shouldn't be getting patients who are having a heart attack or choking. It's not to say that if someone presented with that, we wouldn't immediately respond and render care, but that is not the purpose of urgent care. The purpose of urgent care is for minor illness or injury. And, and it could be your Tewksbury residents in, in there getting a very convenient access to testing because your, your community residents can call in, speak to the urgent care, either make an appointment to become in and be seen within the office or do a telemedicine visit with our physician. And then if they need COVID testing, go through this mobile testing site, which.
But that's not why you're setting this up. You didn't set it up because of such a high demand in Tewksbury for getting cleared for work COVID tests. Now, yes, maybe a Tewksbury resident may come through here. That's not why it's being set up. Am I remote?
Well, it is why it's being set up.
For the demand that you've seen from Tewksbury. That's why you're setting this up? The feeling at the beginning.
We are setting this up to provide an option for mobile testing for our urgent care which provides both illness and injury services and occupational medicine services.
I mean, we have four urgent cares and we determined Tewksbury was the best one. I mean, it is a great location and a great town to work in and.
I'm not even a hundred percent have a problem with what you're doing. I mean, I'm a little, I'm concerned about where you're putting it right now. So that's my problem right now. I don't like where you're putting it because of the access that it can cut off to the building while people are trying to figure out where they belong. I mean, you, you were just saying you're going to cut it down to four out of the seven. It actually, it's more like eight lanes that you're taking up here because of where you're putting the.
Your fall lane is eight spots, right?
Right. So you're, you're talking about, but the one you've got drawn up here is, uh, when I say row, I'm talking about both spaces.
Exactly. I understand.
Seven rows plus the one that the, that the, um, that the office is set up on.
Right.
You're talking about eight. So that whole left side of the parking lot now becomes cordoned off. Now, even if you were only intending to use four lanes initially.
Yeah.
I, I don't see, I'm not even sure that that's better. I would think having more of the lanes open to get, have people have less of a chance of wondering where to go would be more useful. But I still have an issue where it is.
Yeah. Well, I mean, if it was an option one on that first drawing, is that a better location? I mean, that's why we put the options out there. I mean, we're coming to you folks. You get more experience with this than we do, so.
I think it's probably better, but the only issue, you still have the same issue because of the Victor Drive entrance, which is you can't afford to have cars queuing up, waiting to get into spaces because they're blocking access to get into the site.
Yeah. See, option one, they have to drive in and then back out. And we thought that was more obtrusive than just driving through at option two.
I don't know. I, I mean, I've got letters here from the police department and the fire department. We're both not fully on board with this. And, you know, in the event that stuff does get backed up, there's no real plan for what happens.
Okay. Well, is the fire chief on? I actually spoke with the fire chief this afternoon and thought we had a good discussion about this and I thought that the, uh, option two is going to work well. And we did, uh, say that if there's any problems with backing up, that we would readjust the schedule. But nobody wants a problem in the parking lot. Uh, uh, you know, we want to avoid that more than anything.
I don't know. I, I just don't see. I, I just don't see how it doesn't potentially get in the way of people.
Well, is there some kind of restriction that you could put on an approval? I mean, get, let's give it a try and and we, we work hard at, uh, doing this at our other site and we've been very successful. It's actually right next to our emergency department and we haven't, uh, caused any problems for them. Over two months, right, Tracy?
Right, right. And I, and we are planning on bringing in just a couple of people every fifteen minutes or two people every fifteen minutes. And, and we think we can actually get them in and out of that space in three to five minutes. So it, it leaves really ample space to get people in and get them out without, you know, anticipating a backup. And again, we have the ability to turn on or turn off the appointments because, because we're making them by appointment only. People are not able to just show up for them.
Nobody wants, we definitely don't want to create a bad experience for our patients. We want them coming back and doing everything we can to avoid that.
Let me ask you another question. On your, on your map here, you've got, you have arrows. Okay, on your most recent arrows, they only show the people coming into this, into the site, take a right, well, you can invoke Victor Drive. Take a right, go through the, the lane closest to the building, go into your, your rows and then they'll leave the roads on the far driving lanes to exit.
Yep. And they could go left or right and use the Main Street where they take a right or turn left onto Victor.
It just feels like, it just feels like there's a lot of cars that are potentially being in the way of people trying to get in there one way or the other. Because when they're pulling out of the rows, they're now in the way of even if somebody from Victor Drive saw they couldn't use those lanes and wants to go to those far parking spaces, they still potentially have cars driving in their way to come out, to go left, to go out to Victor Drive. Now they can't even get through there because that car's getting ready to pull out and into the lane. I just, I just don't know how this doesn't potentially get in someone's way.
Yeah, but if they, say the business was thriving and we were at already eighty, ninety percent capacity, those kinds of issues would be going on anyways. Plus you'd have people maybe backing out of those spots into the Victor lane and slowing things down. At least this way here, they're drive, always driving straight into that Victor lane side.
Right, but the building was, was reviewed and designed for a specific purpose. If you were busy in the building, fine. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about taking away half or so of the parking spaces in the middle section for a different purpose than the building. So we're not really talking about, you know, if the building were busy.
Right.
You know, that's fine. That was what it was designed to be. This is something additional. I mean, what happens if the building is going at eighty or ninety percent of, you know, use and you've got this thing out in the parking lot? What's the prob, what, you know, you're going to have a problem. You're not going to have enough spaces.
The business at the urgent care comes first, so the testing would have to go. If it became unsafe for the patients or our staff, uh, we want that business there long-term. This is only temporary. We're going to focus on the long-term business, which is your urgent care and the Tewksbury family practice. Those come first.
And, and I, I would add, we do have testing available within the building, so patients can come in the building. This truly is just a, um, more convenient option for patients and it will require them not to have to wear a mask and not to come in and be registered and go into a room, but literally to be in their car. I know that, um, one of your board members said that their, their children may have had this and it's just, it's really, really convenient for folks to be able to get the testing and not have to leave their car.
I, I just, I envision problems. That, that's my, that's my issue.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment if I could?
Yes, Mr. Fatale.
So if it moved to the right, would that be a problem for you, Mr. Johnson, or, or, or because of the location right near the emergency, uh, spot?
Do you mean all the way to the right or you just mean towards the middle?
Well, to the middle or to the right, far, farthest right or? I guess my question I should ask is also to the staff of, of Mr. Foley and the other person is, how many emergencies do you have at that facility? I mean, it's not an emergency care facility to speak of, right? It's an urgent care facility, right?
Exactly. Yes, sir.
And what ambulance does you have come in every day? Or is that a big issue?
Um, we have three to five ambulances per month come into that site for the urgent care.
Okay. That answers it right there. Just so there's not, there's not going to be constant flow coming into that facility or using that access road or, or ambulances on a daily basis. I mean, if, if that's not the case, then uh, you know, I don't have a problem with the location unless you want to move it down, Stephen. I don't have a problem either way. I don't think the ambulances is going to be an area, so that's going to be blocked that much, so.
Well, it won't be blocked. We're, we're keeping the driving lanes open so an ambulance can get through from either direction.
As is the ambulance parking spot will be open. That's the designated site.
But they'll also be able to get to the front doors. Won't let cars linger in the driving lanes.
Yeah, okay. So I guess another question.
The right side of the building, that's the employee parking, correct?
Yes.
Those are marked that way, right?
We don't actually have them designated, but the employees are there first and fill them up first. And the employee, the, uh, the entrance on the Main Street side is for the employees and that's where the time clock is. So they all enter through that Main Street door.
Right, but isn't there something written on those spaces?
Uh, I'd have to take, they could say employee parking. Uh, I guess I don't go over that side that much. Uh.
I don't know. I'm just looking at your, I'm looking at your submittals and the spaces directly in front of the building on the right and the ones directly in front of the building on the backside have something written there.
Yeah, on the side is, uh, it is the employee parking though.
Right, well, I'm, I'm fine, I guess if we wanted to give this a try and see what happens, but, you know, I'm, I'm, I want the board to reserve the right to, um, rescind this if we, if we get complaints from, you know, any of the public safety departments that, that issue with backup or access or anything like that. Um, you know, whether it's, or backups that are getting out onto Victor Drive or Main Street for some reason. Um, and limiting your, your appointments to, what'd you say, two per fifteen minutes?
Uh huh. Yes, sir.
Yeah, and we'll see what happens, but, um.
I'm okay with that, Mr. Chairman, as well.
You guys want to do this for eighteen months?
Well, we don't, I mean, I, I don't know what the future holds unfortunately, just like your previous person. I, I don't know what the future holds with COVID for us, so, um, no, we don't want to do this for eighteen months. Hopefully we won't have to do this for eighteen months because we'll have better solutions.
So how about this?
Yes.
It'll get you through at least a full, um, a full flu and hopefully not COVID, COVID season to do this for a year, correct?
And it'd be fine.
And then we can revisit it if you want an extension at that point. That way we have some time to see also how it works and if there, if there are any problems or whatever.
Yes, that sounds very reasonable.
Sure. It actually matches up with the, uh, office rental, so.
Yeah.
It'd be good.
Okay, okay, um. All right. We're going to bring our meeting back to order. Uh, we will continue with our discussion on fourteen eighteen Main Street, which we had paused while we worked on the audio issue. Mr. Street, you may continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I think I left off, I was just talking about the new hydrant that has been added to the plans. Um, there was previously no hydrants on the site, so we've added one, um, kind of as you look at the plan, the left-hand side is, there will now be a hydrant there for for the fire, um, protection capabilities for the fire department. Um, there's also, uh, a sprinkler room has been added. You notice unit one, there's a, um, sidewalk extending about quarters of the way up unit one and that leads to, uh, the new sprinkler room that the owner and the fire department worked out a location on. So we've, the sprinkler room's been added internally, but, um, as far as a non-substantial change, we now have a sidewalk that, that provides access. Um, I think, oh, and then this, the last one is, um, at the, the owner's request, um, the when you see a pool submission, have the, uh, unit dividers, there was granite curb that separated each one of these units extending twenty some odd feet into the parking area. Um, those are a maintenance challenge. I think this is a fairly common request or change that gets made, but um, the, the, uh, he would like to remove those, not install those unit dividers there, just have, um, pavement throughout the parking lot. Um, but what I will say is there are, there are some overhangs that, that carry between, uh, each set of, of two units there. So there it's still some, some division, um, between each of the units. And, um, those overhangs have, have been on the architected walls. We didn't show them on our plans, but they're, we, and we highlight them now and kind of the dash line that extends off the, off the main building there. On, so we've, well, I guess the, the last thing is there's just a minor change to the deck configuration in the back. So same number of decks, um, same number of staircases down, just they've been reconfigured a little bit to better serve each of the units. Um, so we have, um, uh, we received comments from, uh, Ms. McGinty. Um, she sent over a letter. There was some issues with a fence on the southern property, I believe it was, if I have my earrings correct here. Yeah, so the southern property owner here, um, the previous contractor caused some damage to a fence along there. Um, um, Mr. Duggan met with those owners, I think it was just today, and, uh, they seem, it's a new owner and the fence seems to be in good shape and that they seem satisfied, but certainly fizz damage there that will be, that will be resolved. Um, I don't have letters from DPW or Fire. I, I did speak with, uh, Mr. Hardeman, I believe it was Friday of last week, and he said that, um, he verbally said he didn't have any issues and that this main concern was the fire department being okay with, um, access to the site, so. Uh, no comments from him, no comments from Fire, but we've really, um, we, we've done everything we can to, to enhance this, um, the approval plan set, um, to provide as much access as, as possible here. Uh, so I think overall we is, you know, a handful of minor tweaks, nothing that substantially changes the design or the, um, the intent of the original, uh, permit approval. But we're certainly happy to, um, field any questions and, and we will be at conservation on Wednesday night for some uh, new minor impacts in the buffer zones like that walkway to the sprinkler room and the, the decks back there as well. So thank you for your time and, um, yeah, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, Mr. Fatale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions, Mr. Street, is, um, does the fire department have access to the rear of the building?
The fire department, not by vehicle, no.
Oh, but by walkway? I know it goes to the sprinkler room, but does that go all the way to the back?
It does not and it, the original approval did not provide that either. So that, that hasn't been one of their comments. Um, so that's not something we've proposed to, to change from, from what we were previously shown.
So in order for them to get to the rear of the building and walk down the pack, the pathway where the sprinkler room is and just continue, correct?
Correct. Correct.
I know it's been an issue in others, another, another permits we've gone through. They want access in the back. At least a pathway, uh, uh, cement walkway to the back so they can get their equipment down there and, and hoses and fire, fire personnel as well, so. But I don't have a problem with that. They don't have a problem with it, so. My other question is, where is the post office box going to be located?
The post office box? Well, that's a good question. That's, um, right, so that, that is a new thing since this was approved, you know, two, three years ago. Um, so we can, we can identify that and work with the, the, um, post office to, to make sure it's an appropriate location there. That wasn't something that was, uh, a consideration back when we did this originally and now, now with the new, uh, new standards or regulations and.
Sounds good. Just want to bring it up, make it to your attention so that we can get that resolved.
Sure. Yeah, yeah.
All set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Delaney.
Uh, yeah, well, at this point, uh, you know, I don't have a problem with the, the construction or, or the fire, but what I would like to do is hear from Anna because the letter in here was addressed to her about the fence being fixed, whatever. Now, obviously the guy that owned the place first, he probably wasn't a very good owner to make sure that these people were doing the right thing. So I, I would like to hear from Anna to see if this, the situation with fourteen twenty-six has been straightened out on.
See, I, I put myself over my computer.
Yeah.
Hi, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Response to that?
Oh, yeah.
Anna, can you hold on for one second? Mr. Fowler, just so you know, we do have your audio now.
Yes, you do.
Okay. All right.
I walked down the street to Mr. Cuco's house.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that works.
Well, we're happy to have you.
Oh, yeah.
All right, Anna, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Um, in terms of fourteen eighteen Main Street, I have not been informed that the fence has been repaired. And in your packets for this week's meeting, you, I submitted two letters in the memo from, um, the past year.
Oh, right, right.
About this.
Okay, Andy, Mr. Street, has this guy, has the fence been fixed? Is this complaint been taken care of?
My understanding, and I'm going to try and bring up a picture here, but, but my understanding is that, um, that it's a new owner from whoever sent those letters, and that the fence has been, um, has been repaired, I'm going to try and, you guys see that picture there? I, I think that's the fence in question.
Okay.
Um, but, but, you know, if that's, if that's something that needs to be confirmed, I, I don't think there's any issues issued with that. I mean, um, Mr. Duggan said that they, they have traded phone numbers, and, and he wants to make sure everybody's satisfied with, um, this as well, but.
Well, the thing is, at this particular point, is the new owner going to make sure that it's taken care of?
Is the new.
The owner of the, of the property, is he going to make sure that the complaint is taken care of?
Yes, oh, yes, oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you're saying, yes. No, yeah, it's his full intention to make sure that, that, um, neighbors are happy with, with the situation, yeah.
Anna, were you happy with that?
Um, yes, I will, uh, I suggest that maybe we put in a condition just that the fence be maintained in good condition, um, going forward, in case there's anything else that comes up. Um, and then I'll do a site visit this week, just to verify that. Um, and I also just wanted to mention for the record, um, that, um, the town engineer did submit a letter to the planning board, um, to review the site, and, um, Mr. Street, I forward you a copy of that in your email.
Okay, I just must not have seen it come through, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm all set.
Mr. Fowler, are you, uh, you all right to go?
Yeah, I'm ready.
All right, you're up then.
Um, be honest with you, um, what did Mr., uh, I missed it because I was setting this one up here.
Okay.
Uh, what street number are we on?
This is fourteen eighteen Main Street.
Yeah, okay.
If you want a moment, I can go, and then we'll come back to you, if that's.
No, yeah, go right ahead, do, do that for me.
All right, so then I.
You go out of the way.
All right, then I will, I will take my turn. Let me just, Mr. Street, let me ask you a question. Um, the, the, the owner that owns the property now, is that not who Ms. McGinty was sending these letters to?
I don't think so, it wasn't, it wasn't him who damaged it, no, no.
Well, my issue is, I, I, it may have been resolved, it may have been taken care of, but I don't like Ms. McGinty looking for an answer on something for over a year and not being able to get it.
Yeah, no, that.
It shouldn't require us waiting around till someone comes in and wants to ask for something to get us an answer. That I have a problem with. So I want to be sure that in, in trying to verify that this fence issue is resolved, and in making a condition that the, the fence be maintained, you know, in good condition in perpetuity as part of this, that when we ask a question, we're going to get an answer. Because it's, it's really, you know, it's not acceptable for her, for Ms. McGinty to be sending out letters and get no response. And if we're going to have new people that we should be sending them to, those people should be, those names should be submitted to the town as they come up, to make sure we're sending things, you know, not off into the ether, but we're sending them to where we will get a response.
Right. So, so this is a new ownership group, and, um, you know, when I forwarded, uh, the letters from Anna uh, to, um, to Mr. Duggan, and he was, like I said, he was out there today, yesterday, something like that, and, and with the owners, talking through with them, so, um, it, it's, it's definitely a new ownership, where I believe those, I'm trying to find them on my computer here, but I believe those letters were addressed to, um, maybe even, um, Tish Nahada, I think, uh, who was the original owner of this way back when, when this was being terminated.
Um, yeah, so, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
Um, yeah, so the one from October twenty eighth was to Mr. Nahada, and then the, um, the other one from November sixth, twenty nineteen, was, um, Rinder Johar. So I had two different names, and, um, I had just been informed, the, the previous owner at fourteen twenty-six Main Street had said it was the contractor, Mark Bradley. So that was the name that I had of the contractor who had caused the damage, that, that's what she claimed, so. Um, yeah, if there's new, you know, the new owners, it would be helpful if I, if they would share their contact information with me just going forward, so I have the right information.
Yeah, Mr. Street, if you could make sure that that happened, I mean, obviously, you know, that, that owner or one of the owners or whatever went out and discussed this with the neighbor, that's something that Ms. McGinty would have been good if she had known.
Sure.
Because we would have had that information coming into it. So I think making sure that, um, contact information forwarded to the community development department to update the file would be helpful.
Yeah, we can certainly do that, and just, just for the, so all three of those names listed, um, um, just then, none of those, uh, the current owner is not affiliated with any of those as it relates to that, certainly.
Okay. All right, as to the actual request, I have no issue with it, um, finally, I think, if, if anything, the, the entrance is better than it was before, not worse. So I, I realize we don't have, you know, definitely have an answer of that, but I, I can't imagine why they'd be less happy now than they were initially when we approved this, if it'd be being, being given more space. So I don't think we need to hold up for that. Otherwise, I am all set. Mr. Fowler?
He's got the mute button on his thing.
Mr. Fowler, are you there?
Yes.
His mute button is on.
I'm here.
Okay, you're up, Mr. Fowler.
Welcome aboard, yes. Um, you think it's, you think it's hot there, huh? Not knowing what has transpired in the last fifteen minutes, I heard rumors that this was, this, uh, site had changed hands. Is this true?
It is, yes, yeah.
Okay, who, can I ask who the, uh, the owners are?
So the, the company is Nannick LLC, um, and they're represented by Chris Duggan, uh, who's actually on the call here time.
All right, because I got a phone call about two weeks ago from someone that was interested in the site, and that probably isn't the, the same, uh, uh, group of people, because that would have been something going on a couple of weeks ago, and obviously, this had to transpire before. But I could hear, I could hear a lot, I could hear everything, but I couldn't talk. Um, so I'm all set with this as far as everybody else is concerned. Mr. Fattaya, are you all set?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Um, and, Mr. Chairman, I'm all set.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fowler. All right, so what is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the non-substantial change to, uh, fourteen eighteen Main Street as written.
All right, and then, well, uh, we're going to add the, the condition on the fence will remain in, uh, good repair in perpetuity, correct?
Yeah.
All right. All right, so we have a motion made, we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried unanimously. All right.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item C, proposed zoning bylaw amendments, annual town meeting. Uh, this was originally going to bring this up on our May eleventh meeting, but with all the proposed amendments for town meeting and whatnot, we are bringing this in. Uh, we'll start with, I think in this case, it would be appropriate to start with Mr. Fowler. Actually, I'm sorry, wait, we have the presentation first, I'm sorry, who do we have for this, for presentation?
Mr. Chairman, Steve Sadwick. Um, I do have some information, uh, so as I mentioned earlier, we have, um, the three consultants that helped us work on this, so I think I have the, I think I have the ability to share my screen. Is that, yeah. Um, so this is kind of the list of the things that I, I wanted to just kind of go through, in talking about the whole zoning bylaw recodification. Again, the, um, public hearing, I think, was originally scheduled for sometime, uh, back in April when we were looking at the May town meeting, but it continued to be continued out. Town meeting is occurring on, um, for zoning on January twenty-fourth. And just real briefly, to go through this project a little bit before I dive into bylaw itself, the, uh, the last time that the zoning bylaw had a comprehensive update was back in two thousand and two, and, um, from two thousand and two until about twenty fifteen, the planning board ran a zoning bylaw subcommittee, and that subcommittee, um, continued to work on the bylaw throughout that period of time. And, um, there was approximately a hundred and thirty-one amendments to the bylaw. Um, I was working with the planning board, it seemed like, uh, we were meeting every Monday night. It was either a Monday night of a regular planning board meeting or of the zoning bylaw subcommittee, but, um, there are a lot of good things that were put into the zoning bylaw over time. There was, um, different models that we had received from different types of, um, state toolboxes. Uh, the affordable housing provision went into the zoning bylaw, ground-mounted solar facilities, and a number of other things, open space residential design. But over time, the, the bylaw itself just became a little bit, um, unwieldy, so two thousand and six, the selectmen formed, or in two thousand and sixteen, the selectmen formed the zoning bylaw committee, and we had on that committee, uh, a representative of the planning board, Mr. Fowler was, uh, most recent chair of the committee, we had, uh, selectman Todd Johnson, and then followed by Mark Kratman, uh, Aaron Wartman, who was a Tewksbury resident, but, uh, is the Stonem planning director, zoning enforcement officer, Ed Johnson was on the committee, and, um, Mr., um, Richard Cuco was on it to give us a private sector perspective. So that group, including Anna McGinty and, um, Don Cathcart, myself, the staff, worked on this for approximately, um, four years, for those of us that were around that long. Again, over the course of time, we spent, uh, we had, I think, thirty-five meetings that, uh, the committee held. There was two public input sessions, um, one public presentation, that was a joint presentation to the planning board and the selectmen. There was another public presentation with the planning board for design standards. Then we did two public presentations in December of twenty nineteen, followed on by three, um, presentations in January of twenty twenty. The article was submitted for, um, the twenty twenty annual town meeting, and here on, um, Article twenty seventeen, just talking about the recodification, the, um, what we were trying to do right off the bat was to reorganize and renumber portions of the zoning bylaw to enhance its accessibility and adaptability. We changed the numbering system, the current numbering system is kind of constrained by, uh, thousand number counts, and it kind of affects the subnumbering, and that format just becomes very unwieldy over time as you're amending things. So the new format's easier to follow, administer, and amend over time. There was updating clarification of the purpose and authority of the zoning bylaw, clearly state the town's legal and factual premises for zoning regulations, and this kind of was found in, um, Section One of the proposed bylaw, where it ties it to, um, both Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, which is the Zoning Act, and then the Home Rule Amendment, um, to the Commonwealth's Constitution. There was, uh, a number of things with the, um, definitions in more clearly describing zoning districts, uses and requirements. We pretty much put everything into Section Five, so that it's very easy to find now as far as, um, dimensional requirements, use regulations, and then, um, the four remaining overlay districts. We moved all of the definitions into the bylaw in one section in groups like terms together. The current bylaw right now has definitions in different sections of the bylaw, so there's the main section, ten thousand, and then if you go to the wireless overlay district section, there's, um, definitions for wireless, if you go to, um, other places, the floodplain district, we have, um, definitions. So all of it was brought into this one section in the proposed bylaw, Section Two. And then the grouping that we did was, like terms are now in highlighted sections in the definition, so, um, you can find, if you're looking for something that's building-related, there's a number of different types of, um, definitions that fall in that, and they're all grouped together. Um, just kind of moving down through this list, we, you know, there was redundancy and unnecessary provisions that were in the bylaw that were removed. And then in revising and reorganizing the administrative provisions, uh, that came with how we actually administer the bylaw itself. So there's, there's much more strength in that, it's more robust than what we currently have. And the additions to the zoning bylaw, uh, we ended up strengthening the design guidelines in the town center district currently. The, uh, zoning bylaw town center guidelines reside outside of the zoning bylaw in a separate standalone document. This embeds those guidelines into the zoning bylaw itself. We also added a number of new definitions, um, finally removed a cumbersome determination for lot width, so we have a much more streamlined and easy-to-understand definition of that. There's a number of marijuana-related terms that were added, uh, because of the action of the last Fall Town meeting. We have a number of sign definitions, pet service indoors, a number of new dwelling provision, uh, definitions that show up in the new bylaw. We also added site plan review. Um, this is something that's typically used in most municipalities nationwide, and it applies to, um, both special permits and some by right uses. We added a request for reasonable accommodations, which under, um, which are reasonable recommendations that are requested under the Federal Fair Housing Act, Americans with Disability Act. Recreational marijuana, um, like I said before, um, through the action that occurred in the fall, there was a, um, ban on certain types of adult or recreational marijuana, and that sunset, um, expired. So we have no requirements right now in the zoning bylaw for locations or requirements as to how we would, um, look how we would handle any type of operations that dealt with manufacturing, um, lab testing or cultivation. So that is now in this draft zoning bylaw that's going to be going before a town meeting. Also, um, small cellular antennas outside of the town's right-of-way. This was something that came up, um, at the end, October of last year, with five G cell antennas, um, that are now starting to make their way into municipalities. And for those five G antennas, small cell that would be in the right-of-way, we have a Board of Selectmen policies that would handle that, but there was a concern as to how would we handle it outside of the right-of-way, so it's in the zoning bylaw and puts that into, um, planning board's jurisdiction. Getting down to the revisions, we had talked, we had. Getting down to the revisions, we had talked, we had reduced the number of overlay districts from 11 to 4. And I think everyone's aware that this is something we've talked about for quite a while. One of the overlay districts that was removed was the Highway Corridor Overlay District, which dates back to Mills Corporation, when they were looking to build a mall in the south side of town, which was back in 2004. That never happened, and I think everyone's kind of aware today that the real estate market or malls is probably, will not be seeing a rebound. And Simon Properties currently owns that and has no interest in building a mall there, especially that a ramp to I-93 was necessary to actually implement that. So that was something that was pulled out of the zoning bylaw. Another minor revision, but it was kind of important, was that the parking stall and aisle width requirements were changed in accordance with recommendations from the town engineer. Kevin Hardeman had worked with the committee to talk about why there was a need to reduce the width and length for angle type parking. The medical marijuana dispensary requirements, we removed the 5,000 square foot cap and only one non-exempt. And also, we removed that it had to be in a standalone building. Revised large-scale ground mounted solar facilities from 20 acres to 5 acres. Adjusted billboard distance to residential uses. If people remember, there was an amendment on the floor at town meeting to put in a 1,000-foot setback from a residential district or use. The committee looked at this and had conversations and decided to change that to 500 feet from a residential use, not from the district itself. And then mandated the 15% affordable housing in multifamily developments. There was a lot of conversation with the Planning Board about how our inclusionary zoning would be implemented. And at the end of the day, chose, the committee chose for 15% affordable and multifamily developments, and then for any other type of development, such as an open space residential development, there would be the ability for that fee in lieu of, which caused a lot of consternation over the last couple of years. We added the timing of construction and provision of affordable units for mixed-use projects. We currently do not have that, and there has been concern over the last few years that the residential was kind of outpacing the commercial developments as they were being developed. And then capping the multifamily developments to seven units per acre, except in the town center and mixed-use business district. Currently, there are not any caps on existing overlay districts that we have in town. So this seemed to hit where a lot of people were concerned about the number of mixed-use and multifamily developments that were occurring. We removed the development impact section of the bylaw. It was covered under other regulations. When that was put into the bylaw back in 2002, the town didn't have a stormwater bylaw, erosion control bylaw at that time, and a number of other things that have been implemented since. So it just seemed that it was a good time to remove that because it no longer, it was being implemented in other areas in town. And then revised the special permit section of the bylaw. The current bylaw has three different sections for special permits. There's the use tables themselves, which is what is typically used in most communities. We have a, what's called a use special permit section, which kind of addresses things that are more site plan related, so it's size of the project, traffic generated. And then we also have the site plan special permit. So it just becomes very confusing and unwieldy to try and operate all three of these different types of special permits. And it didn't seem like it was achieving the goals of the community. So with what was done in this proposed zoning bylaw is to have just the use tables and then have the section of site plan special permits, I'm sorry, site plan review, which captures the site plan special permit process off to the side. And then the signed bylaw was updated. There was, signage was added. There was a number of items that were addressed, such as the three-foot-high width of the entire building for a wall sign. And we also came up with different sizes for shopping centers as far as setbacks and size of the shopping centers themselves were concerned. So that was really a quick kind of recap. And, you know, I was thinking about what other things would be helpful for people to, to understand how this was all kind of pulled together. So I, I just wanted to point out that there is on the town website, a section for the zoning bylaw committee itself. We've constantly been putting that material up on the website. And there is a side-by-side comparison, which actually takes the two bylaws. It's about a 243-page document that kind of lays out the difference between the two bylaws. It takes the existing bylaw and then shows where everything in the new bylaw lines up and then tells you what's new in the new bylaw. So those are the, the items that I just wanted to cover to try and explain how we got to the point where we are, why this is a better document for the town than what currently exists. And I'm willing to take questions. Steve, you're off.
Okay. All right. So as I started to try to jump the gun with before, I think it is appropriate that we start with Mr. Fowler. Mr. Fowler, do we have you?
What is that? Yeah, I got a, I'm going to put a Corvette in front of me. Stephen?
Yes.
It, well, actually Steve Sadwick.
Yes.
Steve, can you hear me?
Go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, sorry for the confusion. I think they're going to try to straighten it out tomorrow. It's the first time of all these meetings that we've had that, and I've done a lot, a lot of these medically also, and ever had a problem like this. But anyways, having said that, I like the way that someone that has been following this could see that we've worked with the people that we've talked to, we've reduced things, we've, we've, how could I say, we've made it work so that Judy would be happy. And Judy, I hope you are happy with the work that we've done in the past six months. And Bob, are you there?
He may be on mute.
He may be on mute.
I'm here, Bob.
Hi, Bob. How you doing?
How you doing?
I think that was part of the problem. We had four Bobs and we didn't know what was going on. But anyways, I can do nothing but thank you both for the work you've done with this. And what is, I'm going to throw the question to you, Judy. What do you think of what we've brought this down to?
Oh, I think you've done a marvelous job. Are you kidding? Maybe it was good that the consultants weren't at the table for a little while, but I think that the document hangs together well. It does everything that I think you, I think you wanted. I think you wanted a bylaw that was easier than it certainly is that. It's been updated. It's been modernized. It's, I think it's a much easier document to get through. If people have questions about their property, they can get an answer. So I think you've done a great job. I'm happy. That answers your question.
It's, it's a team effort, as they say.
Yep.
Team effort, believe me. With the manager, it's Steve Sadwick. Oh, that makes it easier when you have a coach like him.
Yes.
Steve, I don't want to go on, because all I can do is tell you step by step, and you've done that tonight. So I'd like, I'd like to leave it at that, for me, anyway. Thank you, and Judy, thank you. Bob, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Before I move on, Mr. Sadwick, could you just, one more time, just for anyone who might be listening, just tell them where they'd be able to see the full bylaw revision? That way, everybody knows it is accessible, they could see it, and where they might find that?
Yeah, I was, I'm going to try and share my screen right there. So that's on the town website, and it's been there throughout the entire project. But, you know, there's archived documents, because I didn't want this left bar to show. It was getting a little bit lengthy. The side-by-side comparison is down here. Zoning map resides here. The final draft, final draft resides here. So all of that, and then also this public presentation comments and responses. As we were doing those public presentations during January and December, people were raising questions, and Anna was capturing the questions, and then we would put responses to those. So everything sits there in that document. So it's all there. The side-by-side is probably the best place to go if people have questions.
I just wanted to make sure everybody got to hear it again, now they can see it, obviously, that there is a place, when we get to town meeting, we could lessen the likelihood that we will be told that no one saw it, don't know what we're talking about. So that's good. And also, just to break it to the next person, as I should have done at the beginning, thank everyone on the bylaw subcommittee for all their work over the time that they've put in to come up with their final product that we're looking at this evening. Obviously, recognize how difficult and time-consuming that was, and appreciate those efforts for coming up with something we can, we can hopefully get to town meeting. So with that, I will go to Mr. Delaney.
Oh, yeah, I want to thank the bylaw committee for the job they've done. The input, just like at the town meeting, we, we take the new package or we take the old package. I prefer the new package, and they've done a hell of a job with it. They've worked three years to bring this to fruition, and I think they've done a wonderful job. That's all I can say is how good a job they've done to make it understandable and viewer pleasant, I guess is the way to put it. I want to thank them all. And at town meeting, I can't see anybody not approving this, this document. I want to thank you all.
Thank you, Delaney. Mr. Cattala.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also want to echo the same thanks to Bob and to Cuco and Judy and Mr. Fowler and Aaron as well. I did attend a few of those meetings, and God bless you for sitting through those meetings for years. I just, I don't know how you did it, but again, a word of thanks for putting it together. It'd be a real tragedy if the residents of Tuxbury don't look at this effort and approve it. Lots of updates, lots of new, lots of new information available for people to review and look at. And I can only hope that at town meeting, the residents of Tuxbury can, can say, yeah, it was a good effort, and it's, we're in a better place with this draft than we are now. So with that, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman, and thanks again to the committee for putting it all together.
All right. So for me, I'd just like to echo something Mr. Delaney just said, as a, just sort of a reminder, I guess, to those who are listening, or may look at this later, that really that is what you can kind of come down to. You can down to, you can either, you know, pass the new bylaw that's been worked on going forward, or we stay with the one we have, which has definitely generated some, you know, complaints or concerns over time. So, you know, when, when you're weighing your decision, and when it comes to town meeting, we register the vote, keep that in mind. You know, everybody is unlikely to be completely happy, either kids, but, you know, no one's going to get everything they want when, you know, when these kind of things are done, especially on this, this scale. This is an enormous undertaking that I think initially thought was going to go much quicker. And I think once everybody got into it, realized what a Herculean task it was to rewrite this so that we can use it for, you know, hopefully a reasonable amount of time going forward if it's passed. And I will make this note because I want this to be, you know, included in the record, and it goes under the category of not everybody being happy. I, I pushed for many times and strenuously for one change that did not make it in here, and that was regarding single-family zoning. I, I accept that it was determined that, you know, it would not be included at this time, and that it may be a bigger issue that needs to be dealt with on its own. But I want to make sure that, so that in the future, we do, we are able to try to address this, that it's been put into the record that that's why it isn't included in the bylaw at this time. It was, you know, it was looked at, and the thought process was that it might take more, more time to look into that specific issue, and that adding it at this time, you know, might not be the best thing, and that's, that's fine. But I, I did push on this issue hard, because I think, much like with our commercial zones throughout the town, they're not all the same. They're not all the same because they recognize that different parts require different, different bylaw rules. And I advocate for the same for a single family, because I think having, you know, full acre and 150-foot frontage for every single family dwelling is, you know, it doesn't make sense. It doesn't recognize what the town is, which is, as I've checked the numbers, 61% of the town. Can someone, you, whoever's got that going on in the background? 61% of the town does not exist, uh, a single-family dwelling do not exist on an acre of land. 23% are less than a quarter acre. 49%, just under 50, are on less than a half an acre. So, and 58% are less than three quarters of an acre. So, you know, that, the, the one acre zoning with 150 feet frontage does not recognize what the town actually is. It does not recognize what certain areas of the town. And I, I do hope that we will look at this going forward and hopefully address it on its own. But in the future, when someone says, why didn't you deal with this when you did the whole zoning bylaw, you just did it, these are the reasons why. Because it's just going to take a little more time. So I just want to make sure that that's in the documentation, so that will be the answer when someone asks. There were two, there were, before I open this up for anyone in the audience, or any comments, there are two motions that I'm also going to ask the board to consider at the end, beside our endorsements, or, I mean, our recommendation for the, for the warrant article in itself. And that's, one, to send a letter to the town moderator, which we should have once the town election is done. And the other one would be to the board of selectmen. Those motions are going to be the same, basically, but they would be, and I'll, I'll, I'll list out what I, what I want to have put in them at the end, but I wanted to make sure I mentioned it now, that we recommend and ask that the bylaw be voted on in its totality, up or down. That amendments are not accepted or offered because of the complexity of the bylaw. I think it would be a unfortunate set of circumstances to have amendments put on the floor at town meeting to the bylaw. You know, just night of, and trying to make changes. I think that there are too many sections that depend on each other, and too many other things that would be put in jeopardy with that going on. So I'll ask that we do that at the end, but I wanted to mention it now. With that, I will open it up to anyone who's on the line that would like to discuss this. Do we have anyone on the line?
No callers yet, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So let's, we'll give it a few seconds because of the delay to make sure that we don't have anybody call in. Mr. Sadwick, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, other than I would offer that if there are people listening that can't make the call in for some reason, that, you know, as always, more than willing to answer any questions, if people want to call the town manager's office and talk to me about specific sections or concerns of the bylaw, or they can email me with my specific sections or concerns of the bylaw, or they can email me, with my email address is on the town website. So, I just want to keep that door open, because, you know, I want to make sure that people feel comfortable with their vote come the 24th, and if there's any lingering doubts, that we're more than willing to answer the questions for them.
All right. Well, I think we space-filled there for a few seconds. We still have no one on the line?
No callers, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Then I will bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board for this warrant article?
Chair, can I make a comment if I could, please?
Yes, Mr. Fertaya.
I omitted not mentioning Steve Sadwick and my thank yous, I believe, Steve. You know, you were the quarterback of this whole segment, and I know that. So, I didn't want to leave you out of this process. I know, I don't know how you do what you do, but I just wanted to recognize you for that. So, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. So, as we have no one in the audience, again, but what is the pleasure of the board as to this warrant article?
Looking like a motion, Mr. Chairman, to close the zoning bylaw amendments? Is that what we, should we do that or not?
I would do that just for Article 27 right now.
Okay. So, we have a motion to close the hearing on Article 27. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously, as to the recommendation of the board to for Article 27.
Make a motion to endorse Article 27 as written in totalitarian, whatever.
So, we'll make a motion to recommend adoption of Article 27. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. We'll do this on a roll call. Mr. Fowler?
Aye.
Mr. Fertaya?
Aye.
Mr. Delaney?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. So, we have the unanimous vote from the members present this evening. So, before we move on, I'd like to make the, I'd like to make a motion, I guess it would be to send two letters, because they're going to be identical. One letter to the town moderator, and one letter to the board of selectmen. And the motion would be as follows. To recommend, we would ask, we would recommend to the town moderator, it would request that the board of selectmen make the same recommendation to the town moderator after they deal with the article, requesting a ruling by the moderator that this article be limited to an up or down vote and not amendable, due to the complexity, interdependence of sections, requirements of federal and state laws and codes, and federal and state legal rulings that deal with zoning bylaws. That's my motion. Do I have a second? A motion made and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. We have no other zoning bylaw amendments?
Yes, we do.
You do? I don't have any more. What else do we have?
Article 28, the map.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. I'm sorry. I flipped it over with the other one. All right. So, moving on to zoning bylaw, Article 28. You have a presentation on that?
Yep. So, I'm going to just put up the map. Okay. So, this is the draft zoning map that would accompany the zoning bylaw if Article 27 passes. Over on the left-hand side are all of the zoning districts, and then followed by the four overlay districts. And again, I've mentioned repeatedly that we're going from 11 overlay districts down to four. Those overlay districts that are replaced are that highway corridor overlay district, which I had mentioned, which was down on the south side of town. It was over in this area over here. It's residential underlying zoning, and, you know, really, we have no idea what's going to happen with that land right now, and it just made no sense to leave it zoned for a mall. And it actually took up 15 pages in the bylaw, pretty much just cut and pasting out of other sections of the bylaw and putting it into this one district. And then there were a few overlays along Route 38 that were brought down into different types of districts. The South Village Business District, the Village Residential District, the Mixed Use Business District. So, those types of districts now reside with zoning district, underlying zoning district itself. And this all kind of goes back to, again, the 2004 master plan, and the 2016 update of the master plan, where we called out these different types of character districts along Route 38 and said, "Route 38 is not the same from the Lowell Line to the Wilmington Line, so we really need to figure out how we would treat these areas differently." So, there was a lot of time and thought that went into the master plans, which then drove the decisions on how these districts would set up along Route 38. There's, so the only four remaining overlays are the Flood Plane and Groundwater Protection, which are typical environmental overlay districts. Our interstate was a means of trying to allow for gas stations along the interstate, interchanges, and there was no need to really change that. So, we left that in place. It only affects three areas of town. And then the medical marijuana, because, again, like I said, we've made some adjustments in the text of the bylaw, and hopefully, we may see some activity there. I do, you know, I just want to make sure that, you know, people are aware that, that as part of these changes that we did, we were looking to eliminate split-zoned parcels. So, along Route 38, regardless of how deep your lot went, the commercial district was 291 feet from the center of Route 38. So, you could have a parcel that was, a portion of it was commercial, and then another portion was heavy industrial, or another portion was residential. So, we tried to push the boundaries of all of the districts out to the parcel edges, which, again, when the zoning map was created years ago, we didn't have this level of sophistication. So, I think it just made sense. It makes it easier for permitting and for people to understand, as far as the butters are concerned, what is next to them and where their rights extend to. We did eliminate, after lengthy discussion, the committee chose to eliminate the municipal district, so that all municipal and school property would reflect the surrounding district. And that goes to municipal uses are allowed in every district in town. It's just a, it's a special permit through the planning board, so there was no need to set up that special district. I will say, though, that there was discussion by the committee, and I believe that, because we know that the Tron School will be coming offline, once the new elementary school will be built, that that was picked up as part of the South, South Village Business District, because it happened to be abutting other commercial properties in that neighborhood. There are also, just so everyone's aware, up in the area of the train crossing at Pinnacle and Livingston Street, that this property that's bound by Jones Farm and Katie's Way, there were some properties that were mixed in there that were heavy industrial properties, but had residential homes on them. And the committee looked at this and said, "It's all very multifamily in that area that's right along the train tracks." And so, those, there's a parcel or two there that changes from heavy industrial to multifamily. Then, I also wanted to point out that the Great Swamp, this big green swath in the middle, used to show up as heavy, and it currently is heavy industrial, but it's really non-buildable because of how wet it is out there. The town owns a number of parcels to the left, and then National Grid owns a number of the parcels to the right. And I think that was, one last thing, sorry. All of the multifamily districts were combined into one single multifamily district now. So, at one time, Emerald Court was a community development district, and looking at how that set up with the new zoning bylaw, it was, just seemed appropriate to make that a multifamily district like the rest of the multifamily developments that we have in town. There are other places that received special permits for multifamily developments within the Community Village Overlay District, namely Jones Farm and Balsam, and both of those developments were picked up and put into multifamily developments. Just double-checking the map. Jones Farm was, and I think Balsam looks like it was, it remained mixed-use business, which is what it kind of translates to in the current zoning district right now. But other than that, everything else pretty much remains the same. I just wanted to kind of walk the board through the changes that were made to the map itself.
All right. We'll go in the same order. We'll start with Mr. Fowler.
Unmute, Bob.
Sorry.
There we go.
Sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes, you're up.
Yeah, okay. From what it was before to what it is now, you'd have to have them side-by-side to totally understand what was done through the town. And it just makes it easier, hopefully makes it easier for people to understand. And that's the end of it for me. Steve, again, good explanation and tremendous use of it. I like this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Mr. Delaney?
No, I'm all set. It's, it's, for somebody like myself, it's a lot easier to understand the way it's presented now than it was before. And I accept it completely. I think it's wonderful. You did a great job, Mr. Sadwick.
Thank you.
Mr. Fertaya?
Yeah, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman, as well. I think it looks great. And I think it's a much better product that we put out on this, this map than it was before. And it explains itself, just looking at it. So, I'm good. Thank you.
I am as well. The one thing I'll ask is that I, I should have asked that my motion for those two letters include Article 27 and 28. So, if the other members don't object, I'd like to have that addition, Article 28 added to the motion for the two letters. All right. A motion made, seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. With that, I will open it up. Do we have anyone on the line for Article 28?
No callers yet, Mr. Chairman.
Not really surprised. If they weren't calling in on 27, I don't think they're calling in on 28. All right. So, with that, then, yes.
Just before, before you go to vote, to kind of let, see if anyone calls in, I did just want to give credit to both Anna for doing the map herself. That was a lot of heavy lift on her part. And then Don did a really good job of working with me and kind of cataloging, keeping track of these changes, because the committee during those meetings could be all over the place. And it was really, you know, the two of us sitting down afterwards and saying, "What, what happened last night?" And we would figure it out, and then give the information to Anna to do the map. So, their work was invaluable, really, to help pull this off.
Thank you to both of them. All right. So, that gave us a little bit of delay, I suspect. We still have no one willing to call in on Article 28?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Then I'll bring it back to the board. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing on Article 28?
Go move.
Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, as to the recommendation of the board for Article 28. We have a motion.
To approve as submitted.
All right. So, we have a motion to, motion recommend adoption of Article 28. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, signify, I agree, go through the rule for this one. Mr. Fowler?
Aye.
Mr. Fertaya?
Aye.
Mr. Delaney?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. So, we have unanimous 4-0 vote on Article 28. And now, I believe I am correct in saying we are done with the proposed zoning bylaw, or, I mean, I'm sorry, any of these town articles. All right. Moving on to agenda item D, 2512 Main Street. I understand the applicant has requested that this be continued. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So, do I have a motion to continue 2512 Main Street, 7:05 on July 13, 2020?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to agenda item E, which is 325 Marshall Street. The applicant has requested that this be continued, also to our 7:13 meeting. Have a motion to continue this until 7 o'clock on 7:13.
So moved.
Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. That brings us to agenda item F, which is 600, oh, I'm sorry, before we do this one, we got a request, it's on my understanding that the, the audio cut out when we were doing our motion for circle health, and there was a request to read it out. So, it'll be on record. John, if you wouldn't mind?
Sure thing. Sure thing.
Thank you.
You want to read the motion?
Yeah, if you would just read the motion out loud, so it's, so the audio picks it up now, so it's on, for anyone who was home. Apparently, the audio cut out when we were making that motion.
When we're making the motion, sure. So, to approve the non-sustancial change for one year, and if any complaints from public safety arise, or complaints for traffic, the planning board has the right to review and resend. And then there's also that there, the appointments will only be two cars per every 15 minutes.
Right. So, that was the motion that was made and passed on circle health, which was the 1574 Main Street in our administrative actions. So, anyone who was listening, we cut out, I guess, during that, so that is for the record now. All right. So, moving on to agenda item F, which is 600 Woven Street, continuing from our 511 meetings, a modification of site plan special permit. Do we have anyone here for 600 Woven Street?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Gene Sullivan, I'm the engineer for the project, representing Pefty Corporation, the owners of 600 Woven Street. Just to give you a quick refresher, we have a application for site plan review for a 23,000 square foot addition to the existing warehouse building and associated parking and so forth. At our last meeting, our only real outstanding issues was to get a blessing on the drainage system from the town engineer. We had, there's one comment in there about a cleansing velocity for a pipe, so we're going to increase some height from 12 to 15 to make sure that he's satisfied. We've also subsequently bent back to the Conservation Commission and received our order of conditions for the project as well, since our last meeting. I don't think there are any other outstanding issues at this time.
All right. Start with Mr. Fertaya.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, that was my question. We resolved the issue with the fire department. Well, was that an issue outstanding as well?
Uh, all they were looking for is to make sure that if there are any egress doors on the rear of the building, that they had proper ability to get out of the building, which they do. There's a maintained, or there's a gravel area all along the back way, so.
Okay. With that, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Delaney?
Yeah, I'm all set with it. They, it's been in here for weeks. So, I think they've covered every base that they were supposed to cover. Question was the fire department and the thing that Mr. Hardeman had to work on, I guess. So, everything seems to be in place. I'm all set with this.
All right. Mr. Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I like Mr. Fertaya and Mr. Delaney, and very pleased with the cooperation that the town has given to the longstanding company at that site. I'm very pleased with the cooperation that the town has given to the longstanding company at that site. They worked it out. We have a, we have a proper, we have a, a business that wants to expand. They'll be able to expand now and it'll be better for the town. So I'm all set.
All right, I'm basically all set as well. The one thing, just, just a clarification. The letter that we have in from the fire department said those walkways will be paved and maintained. Is that going to be the case?
We're not paving behind the building, no.
Okay, because that's the request that we have in the letter from, from the fire department.
My recollection.
This is Monday, May 11th. This is from Wiki. It reads, "I just want to reiterate, reiterate, reiterate the applicant and the board. Areas around the existing and the closed buildings that are not accessible to the, to the traffic shall be, shall have a paved and maintained walkway able to accommodate and support exit egress, exit discharge and potential firefighter operation." And then it says, "If you have any questions, feel free to contact me."
So the back of the building, there really aren't any egress doors over there that are required as means of egress per se? Could we put that in the condition that we satisfy the fire department? As to his concern, if there's something beyond what I understand?
The other board members are fine with that. It's not, and it's not me. I just want to make sure that we're providing what the fire department is looking for.
So all the egress currently on the existing building is on the opposite portion of the building. You know, on the, on the loading dock side of the paved areas today. There's one door out the back that I know of that's just to access some equipment. But they have plenty of egress doors as far as covering code requirement. But we're perfectly happy to have that as some kind of a condition that he's satisfied with egress to and from the building. We are adding hydrants and so forth and, and a turnaround that he requested to make sure their apparatus has had a proper coverage to get to things.
All right, if everybody's fine with that, I don't, I don't have a problem just adding that as a condition. But they just, they are going to meet the fire department's requests. So that's fine.
Okay.
Other than that, I'm all set. So with that, I'll open it up. Is there anyone on the line for 600 Woburn Street?
No callers, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Well, we give it a couple of seconds. The applicant seen the draft conditions?
We did, yes.
You have no issue with the draft conditions that were submitted?
That's correct. We spoke about them at our last meeting.
Mr. Getty, we're fine with what we have here. Nothing's come up since?
Nope, nothing's come up. Would you like me to share the screen?
Yes, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay.
I think I've stretched long enough to make sure we don't have anybody on the line. If you can, yeah, if you would share the draft conditions.
I believe you can see that, right?
Yes, yes. Thank you. All right, so then the only one then would be, I think, if the other board members define, the one that we just discussed, which would be that the walkway, the walkways meet the fire department's requirement. We could just add that one in. I think that will take care of the condition.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so we don't have anyone on the line. So the other board members, we're fine. Everyone's fine with the draft conditions that we have here?
Yeah, I'm good.
All set.
All right, okay. All right, so if there's nothing else, though, what is the pleasure of the board?
Please close the hearing.
All right, we have a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries unanimously. As to the waivers first, so we press, press for waivers. These are listed in C there. Do we have a motion on the waivers that are requested?
Make a motion to endorse the waivers as written, please.
All right, so we have a motion to grant the waivers as listed. We have them on the screen again, one, two, and three. They, they pertain to table of detention requirements, section 19, I mean appendix B, number two, section 19.01 of chapter 19, and the table of parking requirements, appendix C. All right, so we have a motion to grant those waivers as listed. Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor will go through the room again. Mr. Fowler?
Aye.
Or Mr. Fattaya?
Aye.
Mr. Delaney?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well, so we've unanimous approval of the waivers. All right, now as to the modification of site plan special permit as requested, we have a motion from the board.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the modification to site plan, site plan special permit for 600 Woburn Street.
All right, and that motion will include the additional specific, special permit provisions as you see on the screen, which will list the A, B, C, and the additional, which will be D, is the one we discussed tonight, that the, the exit path, exit pathway will meet the fire department requirements as discussed tonight. So those are, that is the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got to do the wrong one. I'm sorry. Mr. Fowler?
Aye.
Mr. Fattaya?
Aye.
Mr. Delaney?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well, so we have unanimous four zero vote on the modification to the site plan special permit. All right, all set. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Have a good night.
All right, moving on to agenda item G, which is 1880 Main Street. Modification of site plan special permit. Do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
So moved.
A motion made. Do I have a second? Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, do we have anyone here for the 1880 Main Street?
You do, Mr. Chairman. Jim Hanley, Civil Design Consultants.
All right, we good? Do we have anyone else?
Yes, Mark Ginsburg, owner of Tuck's Pride Country Club, 1880 Main Street.
Very good. All right, the floor is yours, gentlemen.
Okay, great. So what I want to do tonight is essentially walk through why we're here and what we're doing and where we currently stand with the local process. So why we're here, we're here for a site plan special permit to allow for 1,250 square foot building addition to the pro shop at the Tuck'sbury Country Club from Atkinsburg located at 1880 Main Street. I'm just going to share my screen before I get into this. So the, I have some, some of the presentation materials here. And you kind of see in this picture here what this is, is to look like, who's prepared by the, by the architect. So you might recall, because we were here last month for a conceptual review, that the addition in total is 2,044 square feet addition to the pro shop. And what that includes is a 1,250 square foot portion that will, will house a new 100-seat restaurant. And a portion of those seats will be inside and a portion of those seats will be outside of the, of the proposed restaurant. In addition to that, we have a 790 square foot, 790, 794 square foot addition as well. And this, like we talked about last month, will be specific for bathroom facilities and for relocating the pro shop. So this piece here is not included in the actual application in front of you. But we wanted to provide you with kind of a general overview so that you saw all the moving parts for this one piece of the project. And it will be permitted directly through the building department. And the reason that we're doing this is to allow for construction as soon as possible and avoid any extended appeal period related to the emergency orders and state of emergency by the governor. But again, wanted to provide a, a full picture so that you could kind of see all the moving parts here. And, and that's why it's, it's filed in this map. The additional site improvements included, I'm just going to kind of skip over here to the, to the civil plan now, just so you can get a sense. This is the 800, 794 square foot building. And this here, the detached gray area is the 1,250 square foot area that's actually part of the application. So really, what's left is some minor adjustments to the parking area. We've relocated one of the handicap spaces that, that were removed in this area here to this location. And then another handicap spot over here, which would be adjacent to the, to the proposed pro shop. Minor adjustments to grading and drainage. We have an additional sewer service that will come in here to the existing grease traps and that will service the, the new restroom. We have a significant amount of additional landscaping. So you can see this, this area right here. If you can follow my mouse, this, this area here is all pavement right now. And so, so part of the, part of the proposal in front of you is to remove this pavement. Shut that door. Remove this pavement and place it with some sort of pervious material. Whether this is lumineous or some sort of pervious material to allow for outdoor, outdoor dining. Finally, there are some, some adjustments to the, to the existing clubhouse. So the existing tavern in the existing clubhouse is going to be limited to, is going to have a limited use. It's really going to be used for overflow events and receptions. And because we no longer have the, the seats associated with the tavern that's in the clubhouse, we actually have a net reduction of approximately 50 seats for the total site as a result of this proposed addition. Again, no variances, no waivers are being requested or variances here. This all complies. To tell you kind of where we stand right now, we submitted this on May 7th. We were in front of you on the 11th for preliminary review, which I think I basically gave you the same presentation. Not much is going on. Not much, much has changed since then. On May 27th, we got a letter from Ms. McGinty. And then on June 4th, we got a letter from DPW. Fortunately, neither of the letters had significant comments or technical issues. Were able to turn around and within a day of receiving the DPW comments, we got our revision number one plan set and response letters back to the town. And that was on Friday. So that's kind of where we stand right now. If you have any questions, I'm here, Mark's here, and I think Dick is here as well.
All right, we'll start with Mr. Delaney.
Yeah, I, believe it or not, I was out there walking the, the site today. I think, I think it's a wonderful operation, you know, especially for the bathrooms that are going to be outside. You don't have to go into the clubhouse anymore. I can go on and on because I play golf myself. I think it's a wonderful, wonderful addition to the town. And it gives guys a chance to play golf and be happy. It's a good business. I'd like to keep that business going. And I think Mark has done a hell of a job. And Mr. Hanley with the design of what they want to do there and what they're trying to accomplish. I have nothing but good to say about it. So I think I'll just end it there because I'll go on and on forever. It's a great, great operation. And it's a class operation. That's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney. Mr. Fattaya.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also did a site visit today, Tuck'sbury Country Club. And I do have to say that it's not the same type of club I, I had been to last month. It's changed a lot. Did a lot of work down there with the design of the, of the first key. I spoke with Judy, one of the managers down there. She gave me a rendition of what's happening and what it's going to look like in the future. And I was very pleased and, 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 you know, looking at plans and the bathrooms are going to be outside as well. They started up doing some exterior food stuff today down there. So everyone was wearing their masks and really in, in compliance. The course was, was booming with, with golfers. So hopefully we can keep, keep it that way, you know. I attended a business meeting with, with some of the selectmen and Mr. Sadwick about a month or so ago. And really want to reiterate to my board members here that my opinion, we have to, as board members here as well, try to provide some businesses in town a much-needed, I should say, much-needed lax of, of streamlining, streamlining the process to get them back in operation. This is one of the, one of the, one of the areas we have to do as far as helping businesses get back online. And this project here is going to help them get back online, get the, get the pro shop going, get the rest, get the golfers lounge going. And we need to look at this and get it done ASAP. So I like the design. It looks great. It's going to be a big addition to the, to the golfers in the community and the, and the general public in Tuck'sbury. And really happy with the way it looks. And, and I'm all for this addition and, and making it better for golfers in town. So thank you very much. All set, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Fowler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess you have to be a five-day-a-week golfer to be able to do all that dialogue about golfing. Oh, I enjoy golfing too. But you know what I enjoy more so than that? I enjoy looking in that, at that building. I've been, had the pleasure of walking into that country club. I retired out of that country club. And to me, that was one of the friend de la creme's. I had a fantastic group of people there, 350 people in there all from my retirement. I loved it. You know why? Because the towns, they could see the class in this town through the country club. I want to thank Mr. Ginsburg for that. He said he wanted to do something right, and he has done it right. And we, but he's, he could see the problem that he's had now with the golf not having the ability to get a quick meal, a quick burger, a quick whatever. Now they can do that. They can take that out, go over there with their car, get, get a meal, sit in the, in the green and, and go. But you know what makes it even better? It looks like the regular country club. On that new building that just came home, fantastic. All the way from the masonry to the roof lines, windows and doors. I, you can't have anything better than that. Thank you very much, guys.
All right, I'll echo what we've said so far. And I'll let Mr. Fattaya point out, I just was at or attended the online meeting for the reopening Tuck'sbury businesses maybe about a week ago. And I think, Mr. Fattaya, I think what we're looking for is flexibility. I think that's, that's what I think all of them could be prepared to offer for the businesses to back up and running and offer services to the community. I know that the board of selectmen have made some efforts and concessions to try and speed up that process as well. And I think it wouldn't hurt the board where we can to do the same. Sally, while we're, while we're discussing, is it possible that you can put backup on the screen or rendering?
Sure.
If we just, if we could just leave that up, you know, while we're finishing the conversation right now. That way, folks at home, we're talking about, you know, as we're talking about it as well. I don't have anything really more to add than that. We did have the preliminary discussion on this. We did go through a lot of this then. It was one of the reasons why we asked the petition to bring it in. It wasn't a requirement, but we thought that that would make sense to discuss at our previous meeting so that we could have a more finished product ready when it was submitted this evening. Well, I don't have anything further than that. Do we have anyone on the line who wishes to discuss 1880 Main Street?
No callers, Mr. Chairman.
All right, well, we'll give it a couple of seconds, the time to catch up and make sure. I'll use that time to remind people that the calling number is 978-771-0819. For anyone who wants to discuss anything that matters and on the agenda. I think I stretched there to make sure that nobody called in. So I'll bring it back to the board. Do we have any other further comments? Oh, Ms. McGinty, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Um, no, I don't. I just had, you know, made a comment in my review, my mouth that in terms of the turning radius, that I defer to the fire department. of attorney radius, that we defer to the fire department. So I haven't received a letter from them.
Okay.
So that's it.
Very good. Anything further from any of the board members at this time? I'm hearing none. Does the petitioner have anything else they want to add now?
Oh, I don't think so, Mr. Chairman.
I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. All right, so then what is the pleasure of the board at this time?
Motion to close the hearing.
All right. Motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, motion made and seconded. All the favorites signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, so obviously we're, we're giving this the, I guess we'll call this the, this would be part of the flexibility I was discussing to, to see if we can get, you know, we probably have to put a few things on this that we've tried to avoid lately in terms of, uh, conditional things, such as the, um, you know, fire department sign off on the turn radius and that, that type of thing. Um, so we can make sure we, we do those. So, um, does someone have a motion on the modification of the site plan special permit?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the modification of the site plan special permit for 1880 Main Street as, as, uh, discussed, and they are also the condition about having the, uh, last sign off from the fire department.
All right, so we have a motion made and seconded. All those are favorites, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Steve, do a roll call.
Yeah, I know, I just realized, I'm sorry. Um, Mr. Fowler.
Aye.
Mr. Fattaya.
Aye.
Mr. Delaney.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, so unanimous four zero approval for that. All right. Ms. McGinty, just a question. Do we, we don't have any further idea as to how much longer the, um, moratorium is allowed, do we?
You mean the state of emergency?
Yeah.
No, I don't.
Okay, I just didn't know if there was any guidance that had come out. Okay.
Um, not that I'm aware of, um, as to zoning, so, yeah.
Okay. I mean, again, I think everybody will know that, you know, part of the reason we're doing like this is because these things are being held up, um, in spite of the state of emergency, none of the permit, uh, tolling times in the running while, uh, while we're in the state of emergency. But we won't have another meeting until July. So if those things are lifted, um, we prefer to have these things approved and, and ready to go, so it doesn't hold up the petitioners any longer than necessary. Some of them have been waiting quite some time for, um, for their, for their appeal periods to run. And we want to make sure we have as many of these things able to go as possible. Thank you. All right, moving on to agenda item H, 181 Pine Street, uh, definitive subdivision, open space residential design, continued from our 511 meeting. Do we have anyone here for 181 Pine Street?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, David Plunkett. Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Plunkett.
Okay, thank you. I actually got the camera to work this time.
Very nice. Nice to see you.
I can see it on my end, so I'm not sure if you can see them. Uh, Matt Hammer is here with, uh, tonight and not, he's online also. Matt, are you there?
I am, Attorney Plunkett.
Okay. Uh, so I think maybe the, uh, best way to approach this would be, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hammer just to address some of the issues that in, uh, Mr. Hardeman's letter. Before, uh, Mr. Hammer starts, so to address one of the points that Mr. Hammer is going to talk about relative to the, uh, speed, uh, to the site distance, uh, on Pine Street. Uh, Mr. Hardeman's, um, comments make reference to, uh, that it's a thickly settled, uh, district, so it should have as the calculated speed limit of 30 miles per hour per chapter 19, section 17. But under section 17 of, uh, chapter 90 is referenced, says unless a way is otherwise posted, um, you know, it would be prima facie evidence if it was 30 miles or more in a heavily district, heavily, uh, settled district. And under 17C, it states that you, in a thickly settled district, the selectman may establish a speed limit of 25 miles per hour. And then section seven, 18, which is referenced in section 17, talks about once they establish that, if they post, you know, they, they had to post signs on the way to reflect the speed limit of that way. So, you know, the reality is Pine Street is, um, posted at 25 miles per hour, which is in accordance with Massachusetts general laws being section, chapter 90, section 17, 17C, and section 18. So that as a, uh, introduction, I'll just turn it over to Mr. Hammer.
Uh, thank you, Attorney Plunkett. Uh, for the record, Matt Hammer with Lamplex Engineering and Surveying. Um, since our last meeting, um, our goal was to, um, address, uh, the town engineers' municipal comments, um, of which we have and, uh, some planned modifications, which I can run through with you, as well as, um, meeting the abutter at 171 Pine Street, um, to see if we can help mitigate, uh, some of the abutters' concerns, uh, which we did as well. So, um, pertaining to the engineering comments, um, we've, we've, um, you know, we've gone out and done some additional testing, some soil testing, which was requested by Kevin Those concerns regarding, um, the potential of ledge, uh, where the drainage piping is going to be located, uh, was eliminated by a series of test pits that we conducted. Uh, on that day that we were conducting the test pits, um, we also, um, did an additional soil test that was near this depression, um, that's come up, um, by the abutter at 171 Pine Street, Mr. Hopkinson. Um, when we did that soil test, uh, we did a soil test right near the depression, and it was evaluated by a certified soil scientist and witnessed by Kevin Hardeman, and I was there as well. And it was determined, uh, with this test pit that was located with, directly adjacent to this depression, that the groundwater was actually 24 inches, the seasonal high groundwater, it was 24 inches below, uh, the level of water that's been trapped on, at this depression. What that told us was, is that, uh, the water is being held up by some leaf litter. When we did the soil tests, uh, we deter, we saw that there was, uh, nice fine sandal gravel, sandy gravels beneath the depression. And when we did the soil test, the water started to immediately flow down into the, the test pit itself. So, um, a couple, few days later, that depression was now, didn't have water in it, is what ended up happening. So as long as there's a, a conduit or a connection to the underlying soils, um, the water will not, um, remain at that elevation as a ponding feature. Secondly, um, the, um, the issue was also addressed with the town's, um, conservation agent, Ms. Stefana, Fania Gallo, who also conducted a site visit, um, just to ensure that there was nothing missed that would have, uh, followed under the jurisdiction of the Tewksbury Conservation Commission. Um, because as you, uh, as we reiterated at the last meeting, um, was that the, uh, the property has undergone a, uh, review of the wetland resource areas on the property. So we wanted to make sure that this area was not somehow missed and could be classified as a wetland. And there was a, a memo, well, first of all, our wetland soil scientist is also, I mean, our soil scientist is also a wetland scientist who was doing the connecting to this test pitting as well. Um, and the, the depression did not have the characteristics to be, uh, deemed a wetland resource area. And then Mr. Mrs. Um, Gallo went out to the site and did a, uh, a record of her site visit, which is dated, um, May 26th, where she, she essentially agrees with the same, um, information that we were providing, that this is not a wetland. Secondly, um, we addressed the, um... So related to that, um, we conducted a site, um, visit with the neighbor, uh, Mr. Hopkinson, on, um, May 19th, I believe. And at that meeting, we, um, we wanted to make sure that we had done the soil testing prior, so that we understood what the underlying soils were, as well as we wanted to, um, you know, provide some, um, mitigation to the drainage features, which was also, uh, mentioned at the last meeting, where the rain garden had an overflow feature, emergency overflow feature on the rain garden. And we revised that, uh, plan to not have that overflow feature on the rain garden. We also, um, wanted to, uh, let Mr. Hopkinson know that we would remove those leaves so that that water will now not be impounded by those leaves, uh, that could, um, uh, not allow that water to where it wants to get to, which is that groundwater that's beneath the surface. So we were going to do that. And if you'll notice on the plans, um, on the grading plan on lot one, we've included a, um, a drywall catch basin feature that'll also add as an additional mechanism to, uh, drain water if it is impounded at that low spot, which happens to be on our property too, by the way. We offered, um, to Mr. Hopkinson to, um, you know, to do some mitigation features. And Mr. Hopkinson was insistent upon, um, providing some guarantees, uh, related to some of this mitigation, which we were trying to, you know, uh, tell Mr. Hopkinson, you know, we can provide the design changes and to, uh, incorporate, um, those into the plans, but we don't give personal guarantees, um, related to the work. As you know, the town's going to take over the drainage system for the road, so there would be an operation and maintenance procedure to maintain the drainage system itself related to our development. Um, but also I can't guarantee, um, what would happen on Mr. Hopkinson's property as his property, uh, does drain towards our property as well. Um, I think it was inferred that we don't, you know, uh, we weren't trying to work with Mr. Hopkinson, but I just wanted to let the board know that we were trying to do everything we could to come to some common resolution in an effort to, um, help mitigate some of the concerns by the abutter. I just noticed in his...
Let me interrupt you for one second.
...letter that he felt that wasn't the case, and there's... Yes, Mr. Johnson.
I'm sorry, but just while before you, as you're, because you're discussing it, I was like, yeah, do you have the letter from Mr. Hopkinson that we received? He dated it June 3rd. We got it on June 5th. It's the kind of handwritten?
Yeah, I have that.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure that you did have that, so I'm sorry. Please continue.
I, I'm not going to go through Mr. Hopkinson's response. I know he may speak at the meeting, so I'm sure he can talk to his own letter. But I just wanted to tell this board, in no way did we, um, mention litigation or anything like that related to the issues at the site walker was not our intention. But I just wanted to let the board know, we did go through that effort to, uh, meet with Mr. Hopkinson to try to get to some resolutions. In spite of not being able to get to some sort of agreement on a resolution, we did implement some mitigation features on the design, which was, uh, just to repeat myself, is to remove that overflow, to put in the drywall, and to, um, and to, uh, try to do some grading that would lessen the amount of, uh, runoff that would come off of, uh, lot one. I'm going to go to Mr. Hardeman's letter, walk through his engineering comments. Um, item number two, relating to groundwater mounting analysis, I think we're, um, we're, um, we're really close to, or there's a misinterpretation of the calculation, so we're, we've rectified that. We'll be revising a calculation in regard to the groundwater analysis for the mounting, which is item number two. Down to item number four, uh, we're going to be providing, um, to the engineering department, um, the Mass DEP's, um, requirement for the two-foot separation for the rain garden. We have a confirmation from Heidi Davis from Mass DEP that will show that, um, that our groundwater separation from that rain garden is correct. Item number five, uh, we've changed the sewer line from the house, um, services from a four inch to a six inch. Item number six, um, related to the width of the sidewalk, um, it was notated on the detail sheet that it's five feet wide, but we'll provide some additional clarification on the width of the sidewalk. I don't know if you've noticed on the plans, but we've added a sidewalk, uh, to the easterly side of the roadway that will come up along the roadway. It'll come around the end of the cul-de-sac and terminate at the, at lot one. So that sidewalk is in addition to the plans. Item number seven, um, are some hydroCAD reach evaluations. Uh, we're going to show that all of those are going to be, uh, addressed, the just minor, uh, additional information that Mr. Hardeman was asking for. Additionally, um, you know, we're going to, uh, make sure we put in some maintenance, um, information related to the drywall, which is at the low point, um, on lot one. Moving down to, uh, item nine, relating to the cross slope of the roadway. So the roadway, um, we're doing a low-impact design roadway. It's something that's also encouraged by doing an open space residential subdivision, where we're doing a sheet flow from the right-hand side to the left-hand side of the roadway, uh, to the rain garden. And the way that that's designed does not comply with a typical cross-section of a, of a, of a Tewksbury roadway, where you would crown a roadway and do a traditional catch basin to drain manhole forbay type system, which we can do. We're just showing that you can do a low-impact development and have, uh, less of an impact on the, on the, um, construction of the roadway and the, the way that this is designed to fall in line with a low-impact divide, design, low-impact development design, which is encouraged by the Mass DEP. So that was a new comment, uh, from the old comments that we, or the prior comments that we had received. And then item number 10 is the, uh, project intersection. And if you'll notice, if you're looking at sheet five, do I need to share a screen on this?
Probably better if you're discussing something specific like that.
Okay, so I get to see if I can share the screen here. Okay, so I get to see if I can share the screen here.
If you can blow it up to the area discussing it, best that we can see it.
Okay. Can you see my cursor?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. So if you'll notice with Pine Street, it's my understanding that Pine Street's a very old street. It's it's a bookend by Whipple Road and Chandler Road. It doesn't have sidewalks on it, or actually made down at the Chandler roadside. But if you go down Pine Street, it's it's a lot of like steep embankments. And if you'll notice, the roadway itself is not in the center of the right-of-way to Pine Street. It meanders down Pine Street. So if you'll notice down here where Pine Street comes out to Whipple Road, the distance from the right-of-way to the pavement is approximately 21 feet away. If you go down I just wanted to zoom in a little bit closer. You'll notice that the pavement actually crosses over into our property and actually is over the right-of-way to the neighboring property at 135 Pine. And right in this location, right here, the roadway is approximately six feet away from the right-of-way. So if you can see what happened is the roadway is further away down here and it starts to narrow down. Well, with what happens with that, when you're approaching the intersection from the new road, it reduces the availability of the site distance related to the project entrance and the ongoing traffic cars on Pine Street. So it's in an essence, creating a hardship for us to well, first of all, there's a posted sign down at Chandler Road that is posted of this roadway that is a 25 mile an hour roadway. The site distance that we're showing does meet that site distance, which is 155 lineal feet, and we're at 181 lineal feet. But what happens here is is that the vehicle set back a little bit further from where it would normally be if the pavement was presumably in the center of the right-of-way. We wouldn't be having that particular issue. I spoke with the traffic engineer who we typically utilize for these things. And what normally happens under this circumstance is we can put in a sign on Pine Street coming from Whipple Road that says that there's an intersection approaching to help with that, to alert people that there is an intersection approaching. But this site distance does meet the site distance for 25 mile an hour roadway, which the roadway is posted. If for some reason this needed to be designed at 30 mile an hour, of what, like I said, this is posted at 25, we would be 19 feet short of that if it was 30. But where this is posted at 25, this does is compliant to that, which conflicts with Kevin Hardeman's assessment of what it should be posted, which he's saying, if you look at the Ash Toe manual, he's saying it should be posted 30 mile an hour or designed for 30 mile an hour, even though it's posted for 25. And it was helpful that Attorney Plunkett did do some research on that statute that is referenced in the Ash Toe manual. Moving down to 12, there's been talk about, you know, if a tree falls down behind lot four, how do you access the back of lot four in order to service the maintenance of anything that might happen back here behind lot four? My solution to that, instead of having to do an easement or get the town to bear responsibility for that, we could put a restrict or an assignment of of the responsibility to lot four to take care of any tree that falls down back in this little triangular portion behind the property. And I should note that that area is also mostly in the 25-foot no disturb, which could be deemed to have that just remain if a tree was to fall in the 25-foot no disturb. But if a tree does fall behind lot four, we wouldn't assign a responsibility for the town who who's going to be taking over the open space development and the parcel, excuse me. And then we would just assign that responsibility to lot four, so there would be no easement needed for that. DP, DPW says that they do not recommend the town accept ownership of the open space parcel. It's my understanding that it's the goal of the town of Tewksbury to take ownership of these open space parcels. Hence the reason why we're, they put it in the zoning bylaw to encourage open space residential developments. Sometimes with these projects, the 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 design of the project will change. So we've provided a list of waivers. The board may may not have gotten the list of waivers, but we'll be updating the list of waivers. But we have submitted that to Ms. Annie McGinty as of this late this afternoon, so I apologize for that. But there is a list of waivers that we have submitted to the planning board. We're working with the the next comment down to 14, we're working with the postmaster general to establish the location of the mailboxes. And we are going to have a central location of a mailbox receptacle, which is going to be on the corner of lot one, which is shown with my cursor here. And then 15 is provide some additional information to the radius, we're going to be doing that. We're going to add a notation, which is item number 16, to the sewer manhole to make sure that it's waterproof, all the joints. And then the rest of them are, from 17 and 18 are the standard comments for the need for drainage layer license contractors and all the additional permits that are needed in order to construct the roadway. And I can put it over to the board to answer any questions.
All right.
Did we lose some?
No, I think Mr. Fowler's still there, Mr. Fowler.
I'm sorry.
There you go.
Yeah, I have to say this all over again, oh my gosh. I say that this is quite a feat. Mr. Plunkett, Attorney Plunkett and Mr. Hammer have done to get all the information that they need necessary so that with, in fact, their expertise and the science, wetland scientists and the conservation commission in town to inspect this site and find out that they can make it work. And I'm very pleased to hear, to say that. There's one I I know that I was a little bit concerned about the water feature, but I think that takes care of itself as far as not being able to rain garden, not to be cause a problem with drainage, not being able to go anywhere. But there's other swales on the property, and I'm sure you'll be able to do that with easement. But and I like what you've done with the open space in the back, Matt, relative to if the tree falls. Does anybody hear it? Right. Mr. Plunkett understands that. But no, Mr. Chairman, I am very pleased that the direction this site has taken. And it's a lot, it's really changed in the past month. So that's all I'd like to add right now and look forward to seeing this go over further on. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fattalia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just was going to ask Mr. Hammer, who attended the meeting on May 19?
So that was James and Della and myself.
Was Mr. Hardeman in the loop at all?
No, he was not.
I think I had asked you to keep him in the loop as far as the drainage problems so we could so we could stay ahead of that concern. So I mean, having read the letter by Mr. Hopkinson regarding the water issues, I really hope you can get this, we can get past this and assure us, assure me as a political member that we have the water drainage issues resolved. He seems to be very concerned about it, as I am, as far as making sure that he doesn't have problems going down the road. So it seems like lot one is the biggest problem with the water coming down there and getting resolved, so hopefully we can get past that. I look forward to Mr. Hardeman's analysis of the whole situation, you know, once we get it resolved, or once you get it resolved. So if you think we can get to that point at some sometime?
Yeah, if you look at this sheet, Mr. Fattalia, you'll see this, there's a low spot right here.
Yeah.
So what we've done is we've installed this, basically it's a it's a wicking dry well, which allows the water to go straight down. If it does flood or impound for any reason, it allows that water to get directly into the soils beneath it that we know where that groundwater is underneath the ground. The other thing, if you'll notice here, these lines right here show a swale system. So any water coming down off of lot one will be directed through the swale system to that dry well as well.
Okay. And that'll work?
That's going to work.
Okay, I look forward to that. Hopefully, Mr. Hopkinson can get some some sleep after this gets resolved for his benefit as well. So another question I have for you, reading his letter, he's concerned about the lot lines. They've been finalized, and is he okay with that, you know?
So our survey comes off of a survey that's that was done by Medford Engineering. If you recall, there was an A and R plan that was done last year that subdivided the parcel into, I believe, six lots.
Yeah.
We're coming right off of that survey.
Okay.
So that was a recently performed survey. We've surveyed the property as well, and that's how our lot lines are matching right up to Medford Engineering's lot line.
Okay, sounds great. Other than that, I hope to look at those waivers you're looking for and get them to Mr. Hardeman as well, correct? He's looking for a copy of the waivers too, right?
Excuse me?
Mr. Hardeman is looking for a copy of the waivers as well, correct?
Sure, and I also would mention, Mr. Fattalia, that since Mr. Hardeman's viewed those test pits and seen this design, is aware of the mitigation that we were doing adjacent to Mr. Hopkinson's property, that he did not, Mr. Hardeman did not mention anything in his letter regarding that that design.
Okay, great.
So that, to me, is an indication that he's approved the mitigation that we've proposed since the last plan that was that was submitted.
Okay, and I'm sure we'll get that in writing from him, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, we have it in writing in the way of his review letter. He was out there who witnessed the soil testing. And we had at length conversation about what was happening in this low-lying area. So it's it's really based on these underlying soils that that once you, the water taps into those soils, the water disappears.
Right, okay, all set. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Mr. Delaney.
Yeah, I want to go back to lot one where you have the drainage, but you still have, you still have, you still have the swales that are there to direct the water. Is that correct?
Yeah, we put some additional swales here, Mr. Delaney.
Okay.
On the on the on the southerly side of the lot line to lot one, so that if any runoff is coming off of that lot, it can be picked up in those swales dry well.
Okay, so my my question, I guess, is because I've seen it happen in the past, the person that buys the house wants to relandscap his yard and take the swales out, do away with the swales. Now the water is going to go down onto lot one, or to Mr. Hopkinson's property. The thing is, is there a way that you can put a condition in, like to the owner, that those swales cannot be removed? Like put a deed or is there a way that you can put it in? That's my concern. In other words, if the swales get removed, the water goes down onto his property. Is there a way to make the owner of that property, you know, keep the swales, he can't change it?
Mr. Chairman, in response to Mr. Delaney's question, it's not uncommon now that, you know, and I understand the nature of your request, Mr. Delaney, because sometimes things are in a permit and then people might not look at the permit. So I've dealt with this in a number of occasions from permitting purposes, that if there's something specific to a lot, that the deed for that lot will make reference to the particular condition in the approval that has to do with the operation of that. And I don't see any reason why we couldn't, you know, incorporate that type of specific language and then deed out that recites the the language from the approval that requires that system to remain in place.
You know, it's just one of, you know, you get a new homeowner, he's got a swale in his yard, and he wants to re-landscape it. And I can see that happening, and I can see what happens with the next rainstorm.
I mean, people shouldn't do, but but I understand your point that sometimes they say, I didn't see that, but now we, you know, we can certainly put in the deed itself. So they they can't, that they had no knowledge of the condition that might be imposed.
Would you mind, if I may, if we put it in as a condition to the special permit?
I would have, I don't think, we would have no objection to a condition stating that deed out to lot one make reference to these, to that condition in the permit.
Yeah, we can do that. We'll put a drainage easement on the swale itself, Mr. Delaney.
Okay, as long as that's happening, I feel safe now, because if the water Okay, as long as that's happening, I, I feel safe now because if the water starts coming down, at least Mr. Hopkinsson has something to go back on. Do you know what I'm, I think you know exactly what I'm saying. I'm over talking to this thing.
Yes, yep, we're in agreement.
Okay, as long as that's part of it, I'm fine. I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delaney. For my, for my purposes, you know, I, there's nothing really much to add to what we discussed tonight, other than, you know, wait to just see that everything gets taken care of with Mr. Hardeman, those outstanding issues, he does his final okay after you give him the new, the new plans and whatnot. But that's all set. I know you said you've sent in and you'll revise the waiver letter that went into Mr. McGinty. I think that maybe for our next meeting, I, I know you haven't had, been able to come to complete agreement with Mr. Hopkinsson, but you, you know, you are doing some of the mitigation regardless of whether or not he's completely, you know, agreed to it. If the next time, maybe you could just have for us or send in for us, just a list of some of those things that you've done to address the concerns. I understand it's not in complete, you know, he's not saying, oh yeah, I'm all set, but that way we have a, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, we did that on the last page of my response letter.
Oh, okay, all right.
So.
My fault for missing it.
We wanted to do everything we physically could on our own property to mitigate, to mitigate his concerns the best we could.
Okay.
And those are.
All right.
Three items listed on, on page four.
Okay, I got it now. All right, so we don't need that for next one. Excellent. All right, so I don't have anything else at this time. Do we have anybody on the line?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, Paul Fowler.
Yes.
It seems like this is, everybody's trying to make this so that it's not a bone of contention. Why couldn't we put a 10-foot strip along that property and let it be in an open space area? So in other words, it's not the property of the homeowner, but it's a part of the open space. That way they can't touch it. And it would protect that property from ever being used to allow the water to leave there to Mr. Hopkinsson. Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
My only question would be, are we talking about that, the rear portion of Mr. Hopkinsson's property?
No, 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 the side.
The side, where the rain garden is.
Yes. No, no, no. The side behind Mr. Hopkinsson's house.
Well, Mr. Fowler, we are doing that by putting the easement. The easement's gonna be a working legal restriction on lot one.
Okay, as long as that is it, that's fine.
Yeah, it serves the same purpose.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right, so I'm, do we have anybody on the line for this?
We do have a caller.
All right. Do we know who, do we have him on now?
Yes, yes, he's on right now.
All right, so state your name, the floor will be yours.
Okay, while you're on lot one, let me just talk about that.
I'm sorry, you have, you have to state your name and your address.
Well, oh.
Yes.
Can you keep that?
You need to state, yes, you need to state your name and your address first.
Okay, sorry about that. Dave Hopkinsson, 171 Pine Street in Pittsburgh, Indiana.
Okay. Floor is yours.
Okay, yeah, lot one, let me just talk about that. That swale that's coming down, it had the roof, it had the back part of that lot on my property. You have 130 elevation, I'm trying to read these plans, I bet, looks like that 130 elevation is my 130 elevation too. So in essence, when that comes down off the hill, it's going to roll into my property. I don't see a swale there.
Mr. Hammer, do you have anything?
There's a swale there, it's right here.
Well, I, I don't, I don't see, I don't, I'm not in it yet, you know, it's difficult for me, but the 130 elevation, it's got a swale to it. It looks like it, what is my 130? In other words, it's flat right across there. Is that the condition?
So there's a, there's a, there's a 130 contour here and then there's a 128 contour.
Here, but it looks like the 130 is my 130 too, or 130 also.
It does, but this 128 contour creates a swale in this section because it, it drops two feet.
Listen, but you can't really work out a plan that you really can't see, but the 130 looks like it follows my property, my property is 130.
All right, Mr. Hopkinsson, I, I, Mr. Hopkinsson. Mr. Hopkinsson.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I understand that you're not online, but that's the way these, the hearings have to be held. So we do have the documents on the computer for the board members to see. So we understand what Mr. Hammer's talking about, as well as the fact that those calculations have to be submitted to the town for review. So I, we can't really go back and forth where you keep saying no to something that you can't see. You can make your comment and Mr. Hammer can try to address it, but once he's done so, we can't go back and forth because you don't see what he's talking about.
Well, does he agree with me or not?
I, I believe if I'm not putting words in Mr. Hammer's mouth, I believe he's saying he doesn't agree that what he's presented won't deal with the issue. I, I believe, am I correct, Mr. Hammer?
The thing is, just because Mr. Hammer doesn't agree, doesn't mean that I can agree because of the facts of the facts.
Well, I understand that, Mr. Hopkinsson, but while you may not agree, we are running these through our town engineer. So if the calculations that are submitted are correct, as far as the town engineer is concerned, that's where we take, Mr. Hopkinsson, you can't interrupt me while I'm talking. Mr. Hopkinsson.
Thanks directly on my part.
Mr. Hopkinsson, you cannot interrupt me while I'm in the middle of talking so that I can finish what I was saying. If we submit the numbers.
Well, so.
Sir.
Phone up to my mouth and say.
Sir.
I apologize if I over-stressed.
I understand, just let me finish so I can get this last part of the thought out. When we submit, when, when the petitioner submits this to the town and they check the numbers, if they tell us that the numbers work, that's what the board has to go with. While an abutter may not agree with them, we can listen to the abutter, but we're not going to take your numbers over the ones we get our own town engineer to sign off on. Do you understand?
Yes, and I'm not asking to do anything other than their own engineering at this point.
Well, no, they're being submitted to the town.
Yeah, no, that's all.
All right, so you can continue now.
I don't want to say that much.
That's all right, you can continue.
Okay. We have a quick paper. I, I, I'm too there. I'm not comfortable with what we're setting the field. The overall, this is why I really make the plans with the homeowner, I protect my rights. Allow, not allow, the overflow of the rain garden on the property, even if they erase the proposed spillway, in the case of a continuous infinity type spillway, I don't have an 130 degree. And also, not allow, to allow my existing natural water flow to travel unimpeded to an existing flood area, okay? It's my opinion, the meeting of May 19, 2020 was an uneasy meeting. And I, and they told me that the water flood, flood area in the Combersack was their water and you were going to put it all into the rain garden, east side of my property. When asked, you know, again, they said they're not in the business to guarantee anything, but when you're spilling water on somebody's property, you should have some sort of control rule. By raising the proposed spillway, this eliminates, doesn't eliminate the problem because you have that infinity type of, infinity type of drainfall. The water, they were saying that the water, my property is my problem, not theirs. They help me with my waterfall problem, they would construct catch basin. But ask, they can not guarantee it not overflow. And they could not answer the question, who's going to maintain it? Is the town going to maintain it? How is it? And is the town really going to maintain it? And does that go with the rain garden? When you have a facility set up, and if the town takes it over, they supposed to have annual reports, so it's have access to money for any repairs and stuff like that, does the town take that over? If they do, or if the association takes it over. Can I get on 171 Pine Street, made of the annual report that they're supposed to do every year? I'd appreciate that too. But going back, you know, I was informed, the waterfall, you know, if my water flows off this property, I could face legal registration, litigation in the future. You know, and my, my comment is, how is this natural flow of water, my property, when they are changing the contours and damming the water as the Combersack? That, that certificate of drain that they're talking about is going to be gone because there's a Combersack on there and they deny the access to the natural flooding area. You know, and again, it's up to the door for litigation. But damming the Combersack is drawn, is going to present more problems. The flow of the new water coming off lot one, who you now have the roof in the backyard, the side swells are with Combersack, and my natural waterfall, my problem, you know, that'll be coming attracting use. You know, I know the confidence is all placed on that they're going to dig down into the aquifer and drain it there, but, you know, I don't think that's completely practical in the fact that that can get blocked up, if it blocks up, it's going to back up into my area. And if it does, this water stays for six months, but, you know, if you have to take it for the kids, there's something we should do there.
Mr. Hammer, do you have anything?
Mr. Chairman, have you seen the picture I sent you with this report, another five picture? You know, this area has a hundred year flood almost every year. You know, see the, see the picture? The water is shown, will come up again next year, but this time it'll be severely restricted because of the loss of the, of what it's caused by the Combersack. And everyone's saying that, don't worry about it, we're going to put catch basin down on the ground. And if your only portion from Connor Stone, these catch basins get, get showed up and clogged up. That's why you're going to put Pine Street catch basin into the rain garden, which will add in more pressure to the rain garden, you get that later. But the picture I show, not more of theirs, that's about three feet below the Combersack. Well, the Combersack is three feet above the, the water. If you just take a moment and look at the picture, I appreciate that. The rain garden, you know, the latest drawings I have, the recent proposed spillway, they make a comment that they're doing the planning boards bidding by removing the overflow. Well, if you remove the overflow, all you do is set it up another foot and you have that infinity type of, of spillway at elevation 133. You know, how long can this infinity type spillway maintain this 133-foot elevation? With the corrosion of the weather and its design structural, okay, without a spillway in it? You know, that raises the whole water, it isn't up a foot before it comes onto my property. And also too, storm drainage has been junkering too, including, I think the storm stuff, the management thing was a two-year, 10-year, 25, 15, 100-year storm event. You know, and now the catch basin from Pine Street is going to be involved in that too. So I wonder if that calculation's been done. I understand also, you know, the 100-year flood calculations may be revisited soon. The other thing I'm talking about here is the sea breach. My ground at the rain garden is 130 and the bottom of the rain garden is 130. Are any sea breaches in time or, you know, how this thing is built to hold that back? And again, when they ask, you know, they cannot guarantee the rain garden will not overflow my property. So why am I taking the risk? Why am I taking this risk for this stuff? I, I, you know, I don't, I don't understand. So, I mean, I hope the board is looking at that with me and we're going to have to do some more research, man.
If I may?
Yeah, Ms. McGinty?
Um, I just.
Mr. Hopkinsson, hold on one second. Ms. McGinty, go ahead.
Vinnie just sent us a, a message that the sound, is it coming through on the TV?
Is there, is there an issue with the sound again?
That's the word I got, Mr. Chairman.
I'm asking our, our meeting operators.
Um, I, I'm, I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman. Give us one second to look into it, but I don't, I don't believe so. This noise is driving me crazy.
All right, we're just going to hold on one second while we just confirm whether or not the sound is still going out over the TV.
Mr. Johnson, it's my understanding I heard from a, a town's person that the sound is not going through the TV as well.
Okay.
Give it, give us one second. I believe it's working, Mr. Chairman. We want a shot.
All right, so we will continue. Mr. Hopkinsson, are you still on the line?
Yes, I am.
Did you have, did you have anything? Did you have anything additional?
The board here, looking for you.
Did you have anything you wanted to add, sir?
Well, I don't know what you heard.
Oh, no, we heard you, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, no, we heard you the whole time. It's the broadcast that's going out over the TV that had an issue. So we heard, we heard everything you said.
Okay, just run the right page, that's good.
No problem.
To the rain garden and the spillway and the design, is there anything else on the spillway that you could ask me? I mean, you know, like, you know what I'm talking about, right?
Mr. Hammer, anything?
Yeah, so I can go through the, the concerns that were brought up that I had written down one by one.
Okay.
So I, so there was a, there's a question, it's my understanding that the question on the maintenance of the, of the drainage system itself. As we all know, drainage systems need to be maintained. There's an operation and maintenance procedure that the town's going to follow to maintain these systems during the course of the year in order that the, to show that these systems are all functioning as they were installed. So the project will be reviewed by the, the town to make sure everything was installed properly and then the town will maintain and operation and maintenance of the drain water, drainage facility. And there's money to do that in the way of, the town has money to maintain those systems because these property owners are going to pay taxes. If, if Mr. Hopkinsson wants a, you know, a copy of a, an inspection report or a maintenance report, he may, may very well be able to get those from the, the town of Tewksbury because those reports will be required to be logged in every year that those systems were maintained, just like other drainage systems in the town. just like other drainage systems in the town. Mr. Hopkinson brought up a point about damming the water. We are incorporating this low spot within that what's now going to be a drainage easement on the corner of Lot 1 to incorporate a wick drain if, in fact, there is some impounding of water, which we don't believe is going to be once we remove those leaves on our property. We'd be happy to remove those leaves on Mr. Hopkinson's corner of the property as well, if he would want us to. But we know that when we remove these leaves on our property, that's now going to provide a free-flowing path for the water to get to the groundwater, which we know is two feet below the ground. You know, he mentioned children in the subdivision and how they might be able to affect these drainage systems. It's just like any other neighborhood. You know, they're not supposed to be, you know, playing around with the drainage system. So that's also part of the town's requirements. It's going to be owned by the town, so that would be a violation of town policies. The answer is question, we did include the drainage flow going to the catch basin out in front of the property in the drainage calculation. So that all is included in the stormwater report and the drainage calculations that were conducted, which have been submitted to the town engineer.
That's all good. I appreciate that. Mr. Chairman, the contractor seems to put all energy into the wick drain. And if that fails, we have a situation that the water, I looked at my bolt, is going to have to go someplace. And until it does, it becomes an attractive nuisance. An attractive nuisance? Okay, you can't legislate. You get in the court with an attractive nuisance, and you have a problem. Did you create it? Who created it? All that stuff. And that's something I want to involve in. You know, and my question to the Mr. Chairman is that why is the town getting involved in this? Why is the rain garden, they're taking the rain garden and this wick drain? Which, I don't know. Maybe you can explain that. Why is it a tax credit? Why am I taking over this? You know, I mean, just off the cuff?
Well, I can't speak to, you know, every town policy that there is, but if the petitioner is complying with the requirements for the town to take maintenance ownership of the areas, there isn't much more I can say about it. I mean, your issue at that point isn't with us. I guess your issue at that point would be with the select one.
No, I'm just thinking, if it's a tax credit, I can understand why the town, I can see the conservation areas to keep them, but these rain gardens and stuff, the high maintenance, and the town's supposed to have in their report, that Article 5, that they're supposed to have financing available and stuff like that set aside. So anyhow, that's what I'm thinking about that. Now, as far as the wick drain thing, everything is being pushed on that. And if that fails, we have the problem like that, okay? Now, the leaves of my property are the sole reason why that flood area existed, you know? And as I said, it does, the leaves are part of a natural design to hold water in the flood areas, swamps and stuff like that. For the, you know, the contract. If others say that the leaves coming from my property caused the flood area to exist, you know, it doesn't make any sense. Because the flood area has been there in existence for hundreds of years. The last 75 years, which I've been a caretaker, so to speak. I've seen a lot of people happen. And the animals and the birds and stuff like that, I'm not really concerned with anybody. But if you see the photos from Old Street in 2020, it's different scope to the flood area. You know, the contractor's trying to actually drain by way of excavator, that's cool. And put all the untreated water into the aquifer. But again, it can get blocked up to get to that. And the flood area, I just, I, you know, how can you put all this emphasis on one instrument to get all water relieved? Again, I see my swamp down the line being the caretaker of the water that's being trapped into my property, or the spillway from the rain garden that's on my property. Now, I understand that there's law on my side. And I hope that the planning board will help me out and look at that, too. You know, again, the rain garden, nobody in the business can guarantee overflowing, but the laws, they can't, they can't guide the water on my property. That's how I understand it right now. And the erosion control materials in place on the property, you know, installing erosion control systems, my trees have to be protected, including root system. It's impossible to protect the system. Like it's a situated tree that's begging after break. Maybe somebody erosion control can be mitigated from that spot to protect the trees. And also, the contractor knew the erosion control system at the end of its requirement, okay?
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay, Mr. Hopkinson, thank you very much.
Is that the contract? You got to tell me that it's guaranteed.
I'm sorry, say that again? Could you repeat that, Mr. Hopkinson?
Okay, where did I, what did you hear last?
No, the very last statement you made. You asked something, and I didn't hear what it was.
Well, it's okay. Somebody said, okay. Yeah, I read it. Yeah, what was okay, the rain garden is going to be guaranteed? Okay, let's just move on.
Okay, do you have anything else to add, or are you all set?
Yep. Okay. Lot 1, if I can suggest the following. First, the house floor plan, making the garage with a roll profile towards 171 Pine Street. Two, got the garage and house to use a hip style roof with black chandeliers, dark colored chairs. And that would even help with the pretty stain. And paper house more, let's move from a proposed 90 degree alignment to 171 Pine Street. The lake will help paint privacy for both the house and the side of the deck of the patio. Once on Pine Street. And that's going to be about 10 feet above the rear yard. And, you know, they'll be looking down, we'll be looking up. And they have color, be dark brown or dark color, depending on the landscape. Any comments?
Okay. So, I don't know, Mr. Hammer. Do you guys have any comments on those suggestions?
We haven't designed the house yet, Mr. Johnson. You know, the development, the way that it's been designed has been graded around the location of the houses, the way that they're situated. But we're not going to start talking about hip roofs and color of houses and rotational locations of the house at this point.
Okay, that's good.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Hopkinson?
Hello?
Yes, do you have anything else?
Yeah. The property lines, the board has made the easily sign of my property, had been described. And there's different property lines that don't describe in my documents that I have. So for example, the old property line is always going straight. Now they put a flat angle in. The drawings do not show my whole parcel either, even if it's a coastal couple. Or, unless, they're not square footed so that I even agree with what. You know, therefore, I don't have all documents that were used to state the new interpretation of my property because I don't agree with it.
Okay, well, ultimately, that becomes an issue between you and your, the petitioner as a butters. They've submitted to us plans that come off of a survey that was signed off and stamped. There's not much more we can do about it than that. If you guys have a dispute over-
I'm not sure if this is signed off and stamped, too.
I understand, but you're not the one before us.
I should go to the contractor. I'm going to you because I'm telling you right now, there's a problem.
Okay, but we are not the place where that would be resolved, is what I'm telling you.
So do I have to sue the contractor? Is that what you're telling me?
It's a between you and them issue, not an issue for the planning board. As long as what's been submitted to us is signed off and stamped, there's not much more we can do about it.
Okay, there was one, the last problem. There's a facility I might spin on the road.
Same issue.
Something about that.
That's the same issue.
That's about it.
Okay.
Thank you, Larry. You're going to call me day and night. Please do.
All right.
I mean it, you know. Thanks for the time. I appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you, Mr. Hopkinson. The one other comment I'll make, we did also receive a letter from a different abutter, or actually, an abutter, an abutter that was making reference to the intersection and their concerns over the intersection. Mr. Hammer, did you guys get this one?
I did, Mr. Johnson.
Do you have any comments on that?
If we're, I believe you're referring to Ms. Alexander Louter's letter.
Correct.
And I was looking for, I've read it. I can summarize the gist of that letter. The, I'm trying to find it while I'm talking. Essentially, Ms. Louter has some concerns. Oh, I got it here. She has some concerns about the intersection of Pine Street to Whipple Road. We're not analyzing ourselves, Whipple Road, and the history of Whipple Road and what happens on Whipple Road to Pine Street. So I really can't speak to any of the details related to the developments. What I can say is that we're only doing four homes here. And we feel as though that this small of a development would not adversely affect what's currently going on related to the intersection of Pine and Whipple Road. That's about all I can say about that. We're not doing a traffic study on Whipple Road to try to see what happens there. I know it's a very fast-travel road. I don't know it personally, myself. I don't go down that particular section. I don't know when these accidents happened or why they happened. But what I can say is that we feel as though our development, which is a small development of four lots, will not adversely affect the current situation on Whipple Road.
Chairman, I think the board has seen many traffic studies in the past, which they can call on their experience with the results of those studies that, you know, for residential use only, four houses, it's not going to be any, there will be no significant impact on Whipple Road from a development of four, four-home development off of Pine Street. And, you know, we do not see that it's that it would be appropriate or necessary to have that type of report for submission because there would be no significant impact with this small of a development and limited to residential use.
Yeah, I would tend to agree. And it doesn't trigger a required one. So, I mean, I suspect the other board members would feel the same way, unless someone feels differently. I think that explanation is sufficient to address the abutter of the abutter concern. Do we have anybody else on the line?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
There was also an email submitted from a Timothy Letton dated Sunday, June 7th, just for the record.
Okay, do you know what that, I don't have that one. Do you have, do you know what the gist of that one was?
It's actually a two-page letter. There was 11 detailed comments from it. It would have been in the package that was sent out today with Alex's letter also.
I don't, Mr. Hammer, do you have that one?
I do, Mr. Johnson.
Okay, do you have any comments on that one?
I received that this afternoon. Well, Mr. Letton is a civil engineer, I see, or some sort of engineer. And, you know, reading through his comments, of which they're primarily engineering-related comments, these are same similar issues or same similar things that were currently, or have gone through the review of the town engineer and myself. And then, you know, after he gets done, you know, questioning some of the engineering aspects of the development, you know, there's comments related to the type of curbing, who's certifying to the construction, the town bond, the public roadway. When are the hours of construction, for the construction of the roadway? You know, are we going to be trenching the, are we going to be patching the trenching for the connections out into Pine Street correctly to avoid sinkholes? Are the utility taps for the water line going to be inspected? What are the size of the houses? How many stories are they? So we don't feel as though that, you know, these comments aren't anything that the town engineer hasn't already considered in the town engineer's review.
All right, yeah, I got it here. So I've gone through it. Unless another member has a different opinion, I would agree with Mr. Hammer that these are all items that would have been viewed, will be reviewed by the town engineer as part of the project, so.
Excuse me, it's duly noted. And we'll take those under consideration when, you know, work, looking at the plans.
Okay, all right, very good. Other than that, do any of the board members have any additional comments they want to make at this time? All right, hearing none.
Mr. Chairman, one question.
Yes.
In anticipation of this meeting, would it be advisable that we might have come from the town planning and development office a proposed draft, you know, decision just to look at the potential terms and conditions that we might discuss that at the next meeting? Also, if the board were to take up the vote at the next meeting and there were questions as to what the terms and what the conditions of the, of any approval would be, would consist of?
I think that's probably, at this point, reasonable to, especially since our next meeting is a month out. So I would, I guess it would be on you guys to make sure that you have all your documentation in that the town's going to need in order for Ms. McGinty to work on that. Obviously, you know, I think you can submit your draft, Ms. McGinty, if you choose, and then she can work off of that, if you have one. Otherwise, you need to make sure you have everything in her hands, her to put it together.
Mr. Chairman, my name. Um, also, I recommend that the applicant submit their HOA agreement, if they are doing one, so that the board can look at it prior to the review, the final approval. And that- And that I would have to have the revised plans sufficient time in order for me to finalize my draft conditions. I would recommend that as well. So, you know, we have a month, so that should be sufficient time.
But obviously, in saying that we have the month, you know, usually our meetings are two weeks apart, another time to the end. Don't leave things till the end, so that we're scrambling, asking Ms. McGinty to finish up, the earlier the better. Okay, so, other than that, if the board, no one, the board members have any-
Mr. Chairman, we, we do have a caller.
Okay. Okay.
Whenever you're ready.
All right, we have, you'd state your name and your address, please?
Sure, okay. Dave Hopkinson, 171 Pine Street. A quick question, when you make a connection into Pine Street on the asbestos cement pipe, I, it seems like it's going to be a big connection, involvement, because larger pipe going to a smaller pipe. The cutting of the pipe, because I don't know this, cutting of the pipe and moving it all around, does that pose any type of health threat to the neighborhood? To the asbestos?
I don't believe so, Mr. Hopkinson, I think it's, it's done by a licensed plumber in town and drain layer and so forth. So I think it would be covered by the town engineer reviewing all that information.
Okay, so the town would have that, that we could get hooked that up, right?
Yes, you, you can check with the town engineer's office to see any information on that.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right. We have no other callers?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman, no callers.
Okay, so with that, do we have a, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I can make a motion to continue the 181 Pine Street subdivision to our next meeting.
All right, so we have a motion to continue this to our 7:13 meeting at 7:10, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, and all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, and carries. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, everyone, and have a good evening.
All right, so, moving on to old business, do we have any old business that needs to be discussed? Excuse me. Hearing none. Any new business that needs to be discussed? Hearing no new business. Correspondence, we have one correspondence here that came in from Mr. Sadwick. This is regarding 395 Woburn Street, Cube Smart. The other members have the, the correspondence. Basically, there, there's still some outstanding issues that are going on between the butters here. Mr. Sadwick is offering to take over dealing with these, because he believes that there are some solutions that could remove the planning board from the issue and allow it to be resolved. I would suggest that we take Mr. Sadwick up on his offer. The other board members are in agreement?
Yes, Chairman, I'm, I'm in agreement.
I'm in agreement.
All right, so, we have a motion to, send a letter to Mr. Sadwick, asking him to indeed take this over from the planning board to try and deal with. So do we have a motion for that? Are we a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to town planners. McGinty?
So I, for 725 Main Street, Mr. Ryder had mentioned a couple meetings ago about the issue of the riprap that apparently has not been installed. This was approved before I started with the town, so I was not as familiar with it, but was it supposed to be on the side of budding the wetlands? So if you're looking at Main Street, it's going to be on the left-hand side.
Do any of the members recall off the top of their head, because I don't?
I don't recall, Mr. Chairman.
So we could, I mean, hold this until Mr. Ryder is back.
Why don't we do that?
But I did-
Why don't we do that? Because I just, I honestly, off the top of my head, I do not recall.
Okay.
And since it's his issue, I'd rather leave it, and then when he comes back, hopefully at our next meeting, he can address it directly.
Okay, because I wanted to get clarity before I reach out to the property owner, so I will follow up with him, and then we'll discuss at the next meeting.
Mr. Curco may be aware of those answers. That was just to his side, wasn't it?
I don't know if he, I mean, I pulled Mr. Curco back on at this point. Why don't we leave it to Mr. Ryder and then let him-
Yeah.
Make it figure that out.
Next meeting.
Yeah, I think that would be best. I mean, it's not a, it's not a must-do right this second regardless, so.
Yeah.
All right, anything else, Anna?
No, Mr. Chairman, that's it.
All right, with that, then I will take a motion for adjournment.
Take a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
All right, a motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion made in second, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, good evening, thank you.
Good night.